Good evening. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. This is Select Board Chair Steve DeCoursey. With me tonight in the Select Board chambers are—
John Hurd.
Diane Mahan.
Eric Helmut.
Doug Heimt, Town Council.
Ashley Marsl, Board Manager.
Mr. Diggins, if you can hear us, if you can respond in the affirmative?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Chapdeline, could you also respond in the affirmative if you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Great, thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with an act signed into law on February 15th, 2022, that extends certain COVID-19-related measures. The act includes an extension until July 15th, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The Governor's Order, which is referenced with agenda materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. All participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Novus Agenda platform. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. Once again, we have a full agenda, so let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. I'll now move to the next item on the agenda, Item 2, Discussion and Approval Arlington Community Electricity Program Default Renewable Rate. Talia Fox, Sustainability Manager, and Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So while Talia is joining the meeting, I will just briefly say that Talia is going to run through a presentation on this program, and ultimately what we'll be asking for is the board's authorization for myself working with Talia and our energy broker, Good Energy, to establish a default rate and thereby then execute a contract for the next aggregation. But with that said, I see Talia on the screen, so she can go ahead and share her screen and run through her presentation, and then we'll both be happy to answer the board's questions.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Fox. Sorry on the pronunciation. Nice to see you, Talia.
Thanks to see you. Thank you so much. I will just share my screen right now. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Talia Fox, and I am Arlington's new Sustainability Manager, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you who I have not yet met. I will be presenting briefly on the context for the upcoming contract renewal for the Arlington Community Electricity Program and the opportunity to increase the default level of renewable energy. And as the Town Manager said following the presentation, we will ask the Select Board to discuss that target percentage. So you may know that the town is required to pay for electricity distribution through our utility, Eversource, but we can choose to purchase electricity supply from competitive suppliers. Arlington Community Electricity, or ACE, was launched in 2017. It is a town-vetted municipal aggregation program enabled by state law that allows us to purchase electricity supply in bulk. This has several benefits, including environmental impact, because ACE enables us to purchase clean electricity like wind and solar beyond state requirements; stability, because ACE rates are fixed for the contract duration, typically two to three years, while utility rates fluctuate with the market; competitive rates, which have resulted in significant savings over the life of the program previously; future savings cannot be guaranteed; consumer choice, by offering program options with different levels of additional renewables; and continuity, and that discounts for income-qualified customers and net metering benefits for solar generators are unaffected. This graph shows rates of the ACE default, or local green option, compared to Eversource residential rates over the lifetime of the program. The blue line is the Eversource rate, which you can see has changed every six months. The green line is the ACE rate over time, which has remained consistent, and this consistency has resulted in approximately $2.3 million of savings since 2017, when the program began. This next slide lists the four products that ACE currently offers. Three of the products offer more renewable energy than what is required by the state, layered on top of a basic product that meets state requirements. That additional renewable energy is represented here by the green bars. This first product, the local green option on the left, is the default option. Anyone who opens an electricity account in Arlington will automatically be enrolled in this option, which offers 11% more renewable energy than what the state requires. The customer can then choose to pay for more renewables through the 50% or 100% options, or opt down to a fourth basic option, which simply meets state requirements and is the cheapest of the four options. All of the additional renewables are categorized by the state as Massachusetts Class 1 renewables from local solar, wind, anaerobic digestion, and low-impact hydropower sources. On this next slide, I want to emphasize some of the program's successes. We have very high participation, about 16,000 accounts, or about 75% of all accounts in town, and many people have opted up to the 100% and 50% options, about 1,100 in total as of January. And this is due to the success of our opt-up campaign led by community volunteers, which has encouraged a 60% increase in opt-ups compared to our last contract. And as I mentioned, the cumulative savings through the program are significant, a total of $2.3 million, which is on average about $153 per account. The environmental impact is also significant. Customers have purchased more than 15.1 million kilowatt-hours of additional renewable energy, enough to power 2,600 average Arlington homes on renewables. Here, I'd like to offer some considerations for the upcoming contract renewal. Our current contract expires at the end of November of this year, and we are in conversations with our consultant around the upcoming bidding process. We expect to sign a contract in April or May. After the bid, we will come back to the Select Board for approval, and the Town Manager will sign a new contract. We have the opportunity to select a default rate of renewable energy that is higher than that current 11% default rate that I mentioned. And the Net Zero Action Plan, which the Select Board endorsed in 2021, advises the town to exceed the current 11% default for the upcoming contract and achieve 100% renewables in the ACE default in total by 2030. For comparison, our current 11% default level yields a total of 31% renewables, consisting of the 11% on top of the 20% state-required renewables, so we have a bit of a ways to go to get to our 100% goal. Fortunately, we will have at least two additional contracts to raise the default level prior to 2030, as these contracts have typically lasted, as I mentioned, two to three years each. I want to note that the market, as we know, is volatile right now due to the global pandemic and due to geopolitical conflict, so it is likely that the cost of that ACE basic product will increase in the next contract. As a reminder, that ACE basic product is that lowest-cost option for our program that I showed before with the 0% additional renewables. Unfortunately, we cannot estimate what this cost will be, given how volatile the market is, but what we can say is that this rate will be competitive with the utilities' rates, and we can estimate the cost of the additional renewables in the default, the 50%, and the 100% products that I also reviewed before, which are layered on top of that ACE basic product. Right now, for example, our current 11% ACE default costs the average residential participant an additional $19 per year on top of the average cost of electricity, which right now is about $600 per year for the average residential customer. And estimates for our upcoming contract indicate that every additional 5% of renewable energy adds around $10, excuse me, $10 per user per year, and I'll talk about these cost estimates in more detail on this next slide. So to inform our discussion of the default rate right now, this slide shows cost estimates for the upcoming contract for only the additional portion of renewables. So these figures are the additional amount above what a participant would pay if enrolled in just that ACE basic product, the cheapest option, competitive with utilities' rates that all participants could opt down to at any time. The first column here is the percentage of additional renewables. Right now, again, we're at 11% for our default, so this table is showing options ranging from 15% to 35% just for discussion purposes. That second column is what the user would pay on top of the ACE basic option, and the last two columns are the total amount of renewables, factoring in state requirements in 2025, which is likely around when our next contract would end, and 2030, which is when we'd need to meet our 100% renewable goal. And what I flagged here are two potential options, just for discussion purposes. A 20% default level in that first column would yield a total of 60% renewables by 2030, and we'd be about a third of the way to our 100% goal, because we'd have two more contracts to increase the default level by 20% each. A 30% default level now, in the first column, would yield a total of 70% renewables by 2030, so we'd be halfway to our goal and would have two more contracts to make up the remaining 30%. Last, I'll just note that it's also possible, but not guaranteed, that we could see additional increases in the state requirements, which would increase the totals in the last columns here. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and turn it back over to Adam. We also, I believe, have our consultant on the line to answer any questions, and I thank you all for your time, and I look forward to this discussion tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fox. Mr. Chapdeline, would you like to add anything?
No, I have nothing to add to that excellent presentation, but happy to answer questions. And I know, as I discussed with the chair prior, I do think there's members of the public who may have comment and question as well.
Okay. So I'll turn to the board if there's any questions now, and then we'll hear from the public, and then see if we can have a vote at the end of the presentation. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. Thank you for the excellent presentation, for your good work. Can you help us understand, you know, the table of potential costs with the percentage increases is very helpful. Can you put that in context with what we think the market rates will be? And, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is, do you have—I know that this is speculation, you know, that this is—there are no guarantees in this market for the REX, but where do you think our extra class percentage target would be, your best guess, to where, you know, to where that would be put us at parity with where the market rates are, so that we're—it wouldn't be necessarily costing consumers more than if they weren't in ACE at all?
So, if you want to take a crack, Talia.
So I would actually defer specific questions on market rates. If Patrick from Good Energy, our consultant, is on the line, I just think he will be able to speak a little bit more specifically to those estimates. As far as I understand from him, we can't actually know specifically what the market rates will be, but I think Patrick might be able to say a bit more here, so.
Yes, hello. This is Patrick.
Hi.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I think Talia laid it out well. So we've been working as the town's consultant since the program launched, and effectively, every time we're going out to bid, we're sort of working in whatever the market conditions are at that time and looking to strike at an optimal time and lock in, you know, a fixed price that's stable and that we believe will have savings. But as Talia noted, we—because the utilities set their rates every six months, things can really change a lot in each six-month period, and as you saw in that chart, that's why we have that variability up and down. So, you know, I think if you had looked back over the previous contract, the—this current one that we're in right now, the ACE basic product is saving your average user something like $45 a year. And as Talia noted, those extra renewables right now are costing around $19 or $20. So you get a sense that we're—you know, you're paying—we're overall coming out ahead. And we just—we're not, unfortunately, in the business of forecasting the future rates. If we did—it's kind of like the stock market, you know, if we knew exactly where it was going to head, we'd be—we'd be probably on a beach somewhere. So I think the—what we've found is, you know, your 11% rate today is at a rate that's—that has been sort of a high degree of likelihood, you know, of being lower than the utility still, and the more you increase that, the—I think it's more about sort of the probability that you may end up paying more. So I think moving to something—we—I think we would say moving to something like, you know, that 20% rate that Talia mentioned would—I think would still keep you in a pretty good probability of having savings. If you were, you know, looking at maybe above the 30%, that might be a little bit more on the edge there.
That's actually really helpful, given the uncertainties in the market. Do you think that—you know, if I were to ask you—again, your best projection, you know, we know you're not in the fortune-telling business. What our best shot at—if we wanted to break even, supposing our priority was to say that we want to keep it competitive, not necessarily be less expensive than market, but for the sake of the climate, you know, trying to really maximize that. You mentioned 20% on one end and 30% on the other end. Would 25% be a reasonable ballpark if we—if we wanted to try to keep it about breakeven?
I have to say, I'm hesitant to add—
That's fair.
To add that, yeah. But if I could, I think that—you know, Talia laid out the benefits of this program really well, and particularly as we move into an era of increasing volatility. And I think we're seeing—you know, there are, as Talia mentioned, the geopolitical issues happening, which are part of that volatility. But another—I think—we really think that volatility—it has definitely increased since the program, you know, initially started, and we think that's really here to stay, largely because the world is going through an energy transition, you know. Decarbonization efforts are really ramping up around the world, and that itself—you know, these types of major transitions themselves have volatility as we take, you know, major steps forward and sort of backwards here and there. And the other thing is natural gas now in New England. In the winter, we get the sort of—the last bit of natural gas we need from liquid natural gas that's shipped in, and because we're constrained on the pipeline. And what that means is that those ships can go to really any port around the world, and so we're now competing in a global market for natural gas. So there are a few of these factors that suggest the volatility is here to stay, and I think that really underscores the value of these programs in providing a fixed and, you know, stable price through that, even if maybe it's a little bit higher on average or it's a little lower, but doesn't quite hit that mark. We've still, I think, yeah, had that stability.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, and I—you know, I know I've been trying to pin you down on something that can't be, but I think what's been useful to me is your answers to those impossible questions, because I think it provides some of the context and the way we need to think about it. So I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helmut. And Patrick, just for the record, if you could tell us your last name?
Oh, thank you, yes. Patrick Roach.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Mahan?
Few of my questions really Mr. Helmut covered, so I'm going to try not to re-ask them, but we're talking about this right now and talking about establishing a default rate. Did I read the materials correctly that we have another one or two opportunities where we can revisit the default rate before 2030?
Correct. So we end up executing contracts for the best price, and getting the best price means sometimes the duration varies. So the first contract was about two years. This most recent contract, I believe, was 33 months or 34 months. So that will play out when we get bids in the upcoming weeks, but the overall point is that somewhere within that two- or three-year timeframe means we probably will do this, including this time, three more times before we get to 2030.
Okay. And the reason I'm kind of putting that into play of my thinking is not really sure, just reading my limited financial expertise in terms of the economy—I won't even go into stocks and everything like that—but I'd like to do this—where I'm coming from is that we start off incrementally slower—slowly, not slower, slowly, understanding that, you know, unlike when we were stuck in Nezwick or the NIPD's variants, it's a 15-year decision and you're stuck. And I understand—I guess the only question I'll repeat that Mr. Helmut has already asked is, where you factor in there—I think it said something, every 5% or 10%—is every 5% or 10% is about—you have in the materials a $10 per year projection, so is that 5% or 10% is an estimated $10 per year? And am I hearing that I really can't hang my hat on that, because you're saying—I don't want to say you have no idea, but—
You know what?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chapdeline. I think this is like the difficulty in predicting what's going to happen in the future.
No, no, well, they put it in there.
Yeah, yeah, no, go ahead.
If it's in there, and you're asking me to make a decision, if it's just kind of baseless and you just tell me, "Don't use that," then I won't use that. But—and I'm not trying to be sarcastic or anything, but, you know, I look at the information provided. I'd like to get to the maximum that we can, but also recognizing, you know, the times that we're in. So that—what was provided, should I hang my hat on that at all, or no, just throw that out the window? That's not something that's really valid. It's just in there.
Well, I would say—and certainly Talia and Patrick can add maybe more meat to this—is that there's likely more volatility in the electricity supply than there is in the REX, which is the renewable energy. So when Mr. Helmut and Patrick were just going back and forth, I think a lot of that was about the actual supply. So how much are we paying per kilowatt hour? And that is where all the volatility is, and how—and that's the number that's really hard to predict. I don't think Patrick or his team can tell us what REX are going to cost to the dollar for the next eight years, but I think for the life of this next contract, they have a high degree of ability to say that it will be that amount you referenced, which was, I think you said, $10 for every 5%. Because the REX amounts right now are far less volatile than the actual kilowatts.
I would say Adam got that exactly right, yes.
Okay. No, I'm not going to do it.
Mr. Hurd?
All right. I'm going to try not to reiterate points we keep trying to—
Reiterate, please.
It's so—I—in my first line of question was along the same lines as Mrs. Mahan, is I looked at that figure, and I thought to myself—and, you know, I don't want to offend anybody, but that wasn't—I was like, wow, that's—it's not a huge increase here. If we—for every 5% we go up, $10 a year, that's not—that seems reasonable, and it allows us to kind of be a baseline for—to look at what we—how far we want to increase this, and it also lets us go—you know, we have to take a vote, then we have to go out and face our constituents and neighbors and friends and family and tell them why we voted a certain way. And I am at least, based on the materials, I'd go out and I would say, well, this is the numbers that we're provided with. So I guess my question regarding the $10 is not—I don't want anyone to tell me it's exact, or they can predict the future, but is—if—when we say volatility, is it going to be $11 per 5%? Or is there potential that it could be $20, be four times as much as the increase that we're seeing? So is the volatility a smaller percentage of that $10, or is it likely to be sort of an extreme percentage off of what we're seeing here? Does that make sense?
Yeah, Mr. Roach?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Chapdeline. You both signaled, but go right ahead.
So I want to—you know, and to be fair, you know, Talia and I have to spend hours with Patrick to get our heads around all of this. So the volatility is around the price for the electricity supply, which is highly influenced by the cost of natural gas. And the natural gas market is what is so volatile right now. So the price that we are having—that we—you know, that no one can really predict is how much anybody, whether you're part of this program or not, is going to be paying per kilowatt hour for electricity going forward. What we have more assurance of is when we're buying the renewable energy, which is added on or part of what we're buying. We know what that costs. We know what the price of a REX is. So there actually—there isn't really volatility in that 5% equalling $10 right now.
Okay.
The volatility is in—again, whether you're just part of Eversource or National Grid or you're part of an aggregation, there's volatility in the actual price of the electrons that are flowing through the wires that we're using and charged per kilowatt.
Okay, and I get that. I'm just saying, is it possible that, based on market volatility, it could—the prices could be $20 per 5% for every 5% that we increase, as opposed to the $10 figure that we're seeing?
Patrick, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think what we would expect, the price of the renewable energy, you know, may move a little bit, but it might be more like $11 or maybe $12. That's the kind of movement we would expect to possibly see.
Yeah, so that—I mean, that is the answer that I'm looking for, because as long as we—and again, we're not going to hold anybody to what they say, because it's not—you can't guarantee what—you can't affect the market, but, I mean, if it's $12 per 5%, and I was just doing rough figures, if we were going from 10% to 50%, and I was at $80, at $10 per 5%, now we're up to 100, that's still, you know, within a reasonable amount I would see to be able to achieve our renewable energy goals. And then—so we're trying to set—so say we set the default rate at 30%. It's currently at 11%. Is there going to be any—if someone opts down, does it go from 30% directly to zero, or is there an in-between stage that they can—can they opt down to 11% from 30%?
So the way—the way—the way it's currently set up is there's the default, which everybody goes into, and then there's the opt-up of 50% or 100%. And when you opt down, you go down to zero additional, but you still are getting the renewable energy that's currently required by the state to be provided by any electricity supplier. So you don't opt down to 0% renewable energy, but you opt down to 0% extra renewable energy.
No, I get that. I was just saying, is there—if we increase the default, and someone says, all right, you know, 30% is a little more risk that I want to take, I'm going off 0% because this is what's on the chart in front of us. Is there a—an option in between 0 and 30%? Or is it just either the 30% is the default, and if you opt down from the default, you're down to the 0% additional?
Mr. Chapdeline? Oh, no, Mr. Roach, go ahead.
I think—I'm going to ask Patrick a question. My concern would be whether or not that would impact the aggregation plan that's been approved by the state, and I'm not sure we could do that without opening a whole multi-years-long process with the state again.
Yeah, Adam is spot on. So the aggregation plan that's approved by the Department of Public Utilities specifies a number of options. It says that your default product can have more renewables than required, and you can have these optional ones that go up. It also says you could have one that has no extra renewable energy. So there's not really—in the way the aggregation plan is written today, there's not space for some sort of middle ground between the two. And I think also what we've found is the basic is—that where we—the basic, as we call it, has just been really helpful to—it's—in fact, it's even more sort of beneficial the higher your default option is, just so that there's a kind of a place for everybody. And also, we don't have too many choices, and sometimes you can have that analysis paralysis, there's so many choices. So I think for this renewal particularly, we are—we are—we only have an opt-down that goes to zero additional.
Yeah, I'm not advocating to have an in-between option. I just wanted to— Yeah, I'm not advocating to have an in-between option, I just wanted to see if that option, the 11% would disappear, so that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins, did, I saw your hand go up earlier, did you, I don't know if you have questions now, if you want to defer?
No, no, I'll ask some questions now. And thank you, Mr. Chair. None of these, I think, will be repetitive, and feel free to give me as short answers as you want. I'll just make a comment, though, and maybe you can chime in on this. My sense, my sense is about with renewables, I mean, if anything, the risk, I mean, of change would be to the downside as we get better at producing the renewable energy. I mean, my sense is that it gets cheaper, I mean, so that, that I think that we might actually end up seeing that instead of it being, you know, $10 per 5, 5%, it might actually be lower. Agree, disagree?
That's all you, Patrick.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great question because on the one hand, yes, renewables are getting cheaper every day as we scale up. On the flip side, all of our states in New England particularly have renewable energy standards that are increasing every year. So the new renewables that are coming on are cheaper than the old renewables and increasingly cheaper than even natural gas. But the total demand for renewables is increasing at a rate that's pretty equal to that. So effectively, we're still, generally, we're still looking at sort of increased cost for renewables, but, but you're right, that the new stuff that's coming online is, is getting cheaper.
All right, so that's an interesting problem to have. I mean, so as we increase the demand of renewables, the price goes up. But hopefully that will increase the incentive to create more renewables. That was insightful, thank you. So, so what other communities doing? I mean, I saw in one of the letters that Newton went up to 80%. Do we have a sense of what other communities are doing in terms of how much, I mean, they are increasing the minimum by?
Yeah, I can, I can start with that. Yeah, Newton is probably the, one of the outliers in the state. They added 62% on top of the state's 20%, and that gets you to about, about 80%. So, and, and yeah, the state's at 20% next year, so, or this year, sorry. So, let's see, Somerville launched their program about the same time, really the same time as Arlington. They are looking probably at the 15, 20% range, they have 10% right now. I think what we've seen is, is Arlington was one of, was, along with Somerville, and was one of the first to do 5% back in 2017, which was like, can, can we do this? 5%? Can, can we do this? And, and the answer was yes, we can do it, which is great. So then, most, you know, Arlington and Somerville, Melrose is similar, doubled to 10 or 11% in your case, in the renewal. And then most other communities have kind of followed suit, so 10% is sort of the new, around the state for the green, these green aggregations, 10% has kind of become the new, the new norm. You've got, you've definitely got a few communities who, like Bedford recently went up to 20%. Westboro is up at 20%. You're seeing, it's sort of like the leaders now are like, like, they're sort of like, you know, 10, 10 communities or less probably who are 20% or above, I would say. Yeah.
Great, thank you. So any sense of the elasticity of what happens as you increase the percentage? I mean, do, do people tend to drop off as we increase, I mean, the, the minimum? And if so, do you have a sense of, I mean, what that rate is?
Yeah, I, what I could say overall is, and I think Talia mentioned this a little bit in her program, that the, the program has, has got actually a few more participants in it now than when you launched originally. And I think what we've seen across our communities is, is your, the economic competitiveness of the rate is really what keeps participation up. And, because when, when you don't compete well, that's when third-party marketers start really swooping in or people, you know, leave to go to the utility. So I think, you know, we have, yeah, so I think that's sort of the trade-off there is keeping within striking distance, yeah, of the utility rate.
And this is a question, I think I know the answer to this, but it might reveal a gap in my knowledge. For those who have opted into 100%, then anything that we do now isn't going to affect what they pay. Yes or no? And if it's yes, I'm really interested.
So we will be getting a new rate for all of the options, we'll have to get new pricing, so we won't be changing, so I, effectively, yeah, so everybody, every rate will be, will be getting a new, a new rate, that, yeah.
Yeah, I understand, but, 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 but my point, I guess, is that, I mean, so based on the percentage, like if we go up by, I mean, 5% is $10 a year more, I mean, those who are at 100% are pretty much at their maximum, right? And so now the only change to what they pay is based on the rate, it's not really based on the percentage of the mix that the town determines. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right. So, so 1,600 or 1,100 people in Arlington really won't care what we do with respect to this. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, well, well, I would say preliminarily, I mean, I like the notion of going to 30%, I mean, and then making the next two increases later on, smaller. And I, I like the future boards, whether I'm on it or not, I mean, to look back at us and go, you know, guys, thank you very much, as opposed to me, as opposed to me effectively kicking the can down the road, you know, for longer. I mean, I think you get more bang for our buck with respect to what we're trying to accomplish, with respect, trying to accomplish with global warming and trying to do better by the climate and, and the people coming after us by doing more sooner. And, and so, so yeah, that's where I'm headed, but let's hear from our chair and others. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins. I have a few questions. One on the, the term of the contract that you're going to, you're going to seek bids shortly, and we did 36 months or 33 months last time. And not knowing what the bids are going to be, do you, do you recommend a 36-month period as, as opposed to going on two years due to the volatility? Because I want to try to kneel down some things that, that we may vote to authorize tonight. Go ahead, Patrick.
All right, yeah, we, when we do go to bid, we always get, you know, terms from as short as a year, you know, out to three years or sometimes a little bit, a little bit longer. What we're seeing right now is that the future years, the future year curves are pricing lower, so, you know, two years is going to be cheaper than a one-year, three years are going to be cheaper than a, than a two-year. So I think having that ability to go out three years and potentially, you know, even sometimes it can really matter, even extending a month or two can actually, depending on, can, can have an impact. So I think having the ability to go, to go long would be, would be good to have that, have that ability.
Okay. And, and one of the, we voted this three years ago, and it was probably about 60 degrees warmer than, than I, we voted it than it was today. We were in the Lions Hearing Room at the, at, at the time. And one of the real concerns we had as a board is when we set the default rate, we went to increase it, we were concerned about maintaining the default rate because what we don't want to have happen is to have a rate that people go back to the basic, or opt down to the basic, if you will. And, and part of our vote three years ago was, was basically giving the manager discretion to, to find a percent that, that he deems reasonable and sustains membership in the default. And so, you know, we've heard a different, number of different communities have, have different percentages. Until you get the bids back, you won't know where that is, and I'd be in favor, and we'll hear from the public too, of, of giving the manager some discretion in this and recognizing that we want to increase the default. But just like you're uncomfortable answering what's going to happen in the future, it's hard for us to pick a percentage when the bids haven't come back in, but we can give direction to the town manager on that. Just a question on the, on the opt-ups, because right now we have a 50% opt-up and a 100%. Again, this is a discussion we had before, and in talking to the town manager, it seems that people, not too many people opt up to the 50%. You either go all the way up to 100 or you stay at the, what is now the 11%. And, and so, Mr. Chaplin, are you looking for direction from us too on the number of opt-ups on, on this, this next agreement that may be entered?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I don't think we was, we weren't specifically asking for it, but we would welcome that guidance. And as you just mentioned, I think the reality is that if we get up towards that 20% or more, it will render the 50% opt-up option somewhat moot or futile in that we will be at or above that percentage. So, you know, if ultimately the board is voting to give me some discretion in exercising a contract that increases the default while protecting enrollment in the default, and that, via that discretion, we get close to 50% total in the default, I think we would likely try to move forward with a plan that only has the 100% opt-up. And if the board endorses that, that would be helpful to know.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all the questions I have for right now. So I think at this point, why don't we hear from the public and then we can see if we have any motions?
Sure, the first person I'm going to promote is Susan.
Okay, Susan, identify yourself, okay.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, yeah, if you could just identify yourself for the record and, and for the public, and I'm sorry, I should have said this earlier, for the public comments, if you could limit the comments to three minutes or less, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. So my name is Susan Brau, B-R-A-U, and I've tried to limit this to three minutes, hopefully I can. I'm from Warren Street in Arlington, and I'm here in strong support of increasing ACE's default rate to as high as we possibly can go, even higher than what was presented in the materials that was made available at the town meeting. I, I understand, like Ms. Mahan mentioned, that the price of everything is going up right now. It's, it's really a terrible time to be grappling with the utility pricing decision. Food costs are rising, gas costs are rising, streaming platforms like Netflix and Amazon are rising, and I'm sure like putting on another pricing consideration for Arlington households may feel a little insensitive, but it might be insensitive. Even while I was talking to town residents about this ACE contract, I kept wishing that this negotiation was happening at a different time before inflation became such a factor for, for everyone. And, and especially before like increased prices to coal. I'm angry that gas companies and Netflix and Amazon kind of beat us to people's pocketbooks on this one. Because, because those companies like Netflix and Amazon aren't as sensitive to like Arlington residents as I know the town manager is, I know the sustainability manager is for Arlington, I know the board members are for Arlington. They've like worked in a really healthy profit margin on all of their price increases. So while we're worrying about the environment, they're like, you know, they're, they're going to be fine with the margins that they've added to all of their pricing for groceries and, and gas and all of that. When I look at the, the price increases for the default range, it looks like the increases that we're worrying about are maybe like $30, $40, $50 more per year to make our electricity sustainable. But, you know, that, it's, it's, that's really not a lot when we think about it. When we think about the increase that like Netflix or Amazon is asking for, you know, we're, we're, we're right in that area. I think if we, if we talk about a really bold increase for Arlington, when I look at the town's chart about pricing, and it talks about a 5% increase in the default level may cost Arlington households $10 on average per year, that means if we, if we reached for 100% renewable Arlington, uh, energy by 2025, it might cost the average household about $140 more per year. That's, it's just per year to get to that 100% rate, which really doesn't feel like that much to me. So even though I know that we're talking about a smaller default, I really want to put this in perspective, if we reached for the moon, what that might mean.
You're just over three minutes now, so I, if you have a sentence or two to wrap up on, that, that, that's fine, but otherwise.
No, I appreciate that. So, so I appreciate that. I'm really not flippant about the cost of $140. I know that that's a stretch for some people, but, but I really want us to be very bold in this decision and think about it in terms of all the other costs that we have in, in our household budgets. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Alan Lenoff.
Mm-hmm. Good evening, Mr. Lenoff.
Good evening. I'm Alan Lenoff. For the past two years, I've been in a group of volunteers working to publicize and promote the ACE option to choose 100% local renewable electricity. We've used several approaches to spread the word, including distributing over 150-yard signs. I've delivered over 100 of them myself. My motivation to spend time promoting ACE comes from being aware that we're on track to leave our children a severely damaged world with enormous costs for them to bear. I think you hear a lot about flooding in East Arlington already. Rising sea levels threaten to make the flooding much worse and affect many more properties. Though our, our efforts to encourage people to opt up to 100% have been very successful as Talia talked earlier, in comparison with other towns that have similar energy programs. But with all our work, the vast majority of ACE customers are still at the lower default percentage. Most of those people have not made a decision that the default is right for them. They simply haven't tuned in, or they're confused about electricity choices, or they just have not gotten around to finding the obdach form and filling it out. We need to make rapid progress toward getting our town to 100% renewable electricity. And to get to our goal of 100%, we will at some point have to go beyond aiming to match or beat the Eversource price. I believe that we should raise the ACE default rate to 30% over the state minimum with this next ACE contract, and I ask that you endorse taking that step.
Thank you, Mr. Lenoff.
Next speaker is Ryan Kapalski.
This is Ryan Kapalski. I live on Summer Street in Arlington, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm actually here this evening as a member of the Clean Energy Future Committee, and specifically, I'm the liaison on the committee to work with town staff on the action item in the Net Zero Action Plan regarding getting us to 100% renewable electricity by 2030. I've also been on the Energy Working Group since, oh, 2010 or maybe even earlier, so I had a small hand in helping the town establish the ACE program back in 2017. I want to start by just expressing my appreciation to the select board for continuing to support all the town's efforts around energy efficiency, clean energy, and climate resiliency. I've worked on this my entire career, and it's great to live in a town where the town is leading on these important issues. I think you've already heard from a couple of members of the public, you'll hear from a bunch more, and you've heard from, from our town staff around the options. Reducing our emissions from electricity is one of the most important things we can do to meet our climate goals, and it's actually... to meet our climate goals, and it's actually, the ACE program is actually one of the most cost-effective ways to do that. It's actually, we're talking a lot about cost, but this is actually a fairly cost-efficient way to achieve emissions reductions. So I would just encourage you to be as bold as you can as you give guidance to the town manager and to the sustainability manager. I'm actually very confident we'll get to 100% by that 2030 timeframe as we implement, you know, ever higher levels. But I'll also point out that it's the cumulative emissions that matter. So it's not just the annual target, but actually the total emissions that go into the atmosphere. So the more aggressive we can be now, the more impactful our decisions will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. McIntyre.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little bit dark today. My name is Patty McIntyre. I'm a member of Mothers Out Front, and I'm also co-coordinator with Sue Brau, who spoke earlier on Mothers Out Front's ACE campaign. When I was thinking about what I was going to say tonight, I came across a newspaper article that I thought was timely and important. I don't think with three minutes, I'm going to be able to quote some of the items in the article, but I'll just mention it and mention some of the points that struck me. So in yesterday's New York Times, Thomas Friedman wrote an opinion piece on how to defeat Putin and save the planet, which I think is very timely, and he talks about how we need to get off our oil addiction and what it means for the world economy. He talked about hopeful things, things that we can do, solutions. But a couple of the things in his opinion piece struck me, and one of the ones that he mentioned was that climate change has not taken a timeout for the war in Ukraine. Have you checked the weather report for the North and South Poles lately? Simultaneous extreme heat waves gripped part of Antarctica this month, driving temperatures there to 70 degrees Fahrenheit warmer than the average for this time of year, and areas of the Arctic making them more than 50 degrees warmer than average. That really struck me, and it scares me. And it scares me to read about wildfires on the West Coast, and hurricanes, and floods, and tornadoes, and all of the terrible weather that we've seen over the past many years. So sometimes it makes me want to crawl into bed and pull the covers over my head, and sometimes I just want to watch Netflix that Sue said is so expensive, but I can't do that. I have two kids, two young adults, and I need to try to do everything I can to help. It's why I joined Mothers Out Front and why I urge the town to take bold action for the ACE program by raising the default as high as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Antzak.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amy Antzak. That's A-N-T-C-Z-A-K. I've been a resident of Arlington for eight years, and I'm here as another member of Mothers Out Front and as a mother of two young children. I have seven-year-old twins. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I can vividly remember when I realized how dire the climate crisis was. It was 2018, and the United Nations IPCC report had just come out that said we only had 12 years to make pretty drastic systemic changes before the effects of climate change became irreversible. And that hit me like a ton of bricks. I remember sitting at the table, reading the New York Times article about the report while my kids sat across from me eating a snack, dropping goldfish all over the floor, and I just thought, my God, these three-year-olds would only be 15 in 12 years. What kind of future was waiting for them? And unfortunately, here we are almost four years later with even less time to make necessary changes, and the world continues to use fossil fuels and emit greenhouse gases at an alarming rate. Now, as a mom of young children, the thing I need more than anything else is time, as I'm sure so many of you can relate to. I need more time with my kids to run errands, to catch up on work. There's just never enough time. But the same is true for climate change, right? We are simply running out of time. Today's young people will grow up in a climate altered by our choices right now. Four years ago, Arlington faced the choice of whether to adopt community choice aggregation, and by choosing to take action, we've saved over 10 million tons of CO2 emissions. That's amazing, but it's nowhere near enough, and the time for small incremental changes has passed. If we want to make sure that our children have a livable climate, we need to take bold action now. I urge you to raise the default rate for renewable energy for the town to the highest rate feasible, given the crisis facing all of us. Here in Arlington, we've declared a climate emergency, and we've set a goal to reach net zero by 2050, and that's great, but frankly, 2050 is too late. We need to reach net zero well before that, and increasing the default rate through the ACE program is the fastest and most efficient way to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. As others have mentioned tonight, renewable energy is the cheapest source of energy, and as more solar panels and wind farms are installed, it will only get cheaper. Relying on fossil fuels as an energy source is not only environmentally irresponsible, but it gets more fiscally irresponsible every year. And clearly, current events have shown us that relying on oil and gas for energy is dangerous for so many reasons. Arlington has been a leader on many fronts, and this issue should be no different. Let's show our children what bold leadership looks like and that we did everything we could to make a difference for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Brucey Molten.
Okay. And while we're waiting, how many people are on the list right now?
After Brucey, I got all four.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't we, for that, we'll have the four speakers, and then we can get back to our deliberations. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brucey Molten. I live in Precinct 12. I have been a member of Sustainable Arlington for 12 or 15 years, and I am co-chair currently of Sustainable Arlington. I am speaking first to say that at our March 16 meeting, our group took a vote to ask for the highest possible increase in the default amount of renewable energy, just as we did at the time of the last contract negotiation. We think that climate change is kind of like a wildfire. When you're fighting a wildfire, you don't turn the hose in the opposite direction. And we are asking that we turn everything we've got to reducing the amount of fossil fuels producing our electricity, and that is by increasing the renewable energy percentage in the default as high as possible at our earliest possible opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Neely Pearlmutter.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Neely Pearlmutter. I live on Harlow Street in Precinct 7. I am also a member of Mothers Out Front, and I support everything that has been said so far. I will simply add that I am urging you to act as leaders in this fight we are in for really the future of our children. We heard earlier tonight that what towns do matters. What towns do matters to other towns. We in Arlington have been a leader, and by increasing the default as much as possible, we can continue to push other towns around Massachusetts to raise the amount of default that they see as possible. We also are leaders because we communicate to the market that there is a market for renewables, and so we help to increase the supply by sending signals to the market that we care about having renewable energy. And last of all, we send a signal to our children that we are leaders in the fight against climate change, so that as our children look at us asking how we have helped to fight this fight that we are in, we can look them in the eyes and tell them how we are leaders in this fight. I urge you to set the highest default possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Claire?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Claire Moody, M-O-O-D-I-E. I live on Richardson Ave. I'm writing as co-coordinator of Mothers Out Front Arlington, peer school green team lead, and also the mother of two young boys. I too am strongly in favor of the highest default rate possible for ACE. We need to shift as quickly as possible to renewable energy sources so we can meet our net zero plan for the town. An increase from 11% to 20 or even 30% over the state requirement just isn't enough to meet our goals, show Arlington's leadership in the area, and make the time-sensitive shifts we need to make now. Energy prices are in flux for several reasons, including the heartbreaking geopolitical conflict in Ukraine. It's the time to invest in local renewables, not continue to be dependent on fossil fuels, including natural gas. We are a town committed to taking care of each other, and I'm proud of the town's work to support households in need of assistance, for example, including the low-income home energy assistance program. I know this work will continue, and Mothers Out Front welcomes any conversations to ensure all residents' needs are met. Also, the 72 pages of letters that you've received in support of a higher default rate for ACE is a strong indication of the support across the town. Please approve the highest rate possible this year to get us collectively as a town onto 100% local renewables as quickly as possible. My family and I thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, if you just want to unmute your mic.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I'm having problems with my camera, but thank you for recognizing me and giving me an opportunity to speak. I live at 99 Warren Street. Len Diggins alluded to one letter referencing the action that the Newton Select Board took, and that was my letter. And I just want to say that it seems to me that 80% renewable as a default and 60% above the state minimum is something that Arlington ought to be shooting for, ought to be matching, if not in this round, then certainly in the next round. And I guess, it strikes me that we consider it good that 1,100 households in Arlington are opting up when that's only 7% by my math of the total households in Arlington. I submit to you, members of the Select Board, that people aren't opting up because people have their heads in the stand, and that you as leaders ought to be stepping up the way that the leadership in the town of Newton is doing, and recognizing that we're in big trouble here. As Patty McIntyre alluded to, the article in the Times two days ago said that we're above freezing in the Antarctic and the Arctic, both poles, and it's winter in the Antarctic right now. It's above freezing in parts of the Antarctic in winter now. I'm not only upset because I'm scared about the future of our planet and our civilization, I'm upset because I'm seeing my own kids. I have two young adult kids, and I'm seeing them being even more negative than I am and losing hope. And it just seems like, I mean, I understand that in Arlington, we're doing more than most communities, right? Like, you know, having a goal of getting to 100% in 10 years, that's great. That's more than most communities. But it seems to me that we ought to be up there with Newton, because when we look at what is being done at other levels of government and in the private sector, there's just a complete abdication from responsibility. Just to cite two examples, in the federal government, the Biden administration, which is supposedly, you know, introducing this great amount of leadership on climate, just decided to replace 165,000 old mail trucks with mostly gasoline mail trucks, when the technology is there to buy electric mail trucks, right? It's affordable, the technology is there, it's low-hanging fruit, it would have a lot of symbolic value. And the Biden administration is saying, no, that's too much of a heavy lift.
Excuse me, Mr. Hazelton, you're at about 3:15, so if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess what I'm asking for is for leadership from the town Select Board to acknowledge that we, as a progressive community, need to be way out in front, not just better than Somerville. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Hanlon. I live on Park Street in Precinct 5, and I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 5. I submitted probably about three or four pages of the 72 pages of letters that you already have, so I don't really need to say all that much orally. I just wanted to try to focus in on some background assumptions of much of the conversation. The first thing, I think that the people who sent you the letters, that you've talked tonight, have at least provided some degree of security when, like Mr. Hurd, you face your constituents and explain what it is you decided to do. You're just as apt to have people applauding your leadership if you are bold here than people questioning your fiscal responsibility. So I think that should be reassuring. Second is I think that Len Diggins is exactly right, that not only will future boards, but Arlington will thank you for being aggressive now and front-loading the changes that need to take place. As Mr. Potowski told you, the key thing is not whether or not you get to 100% by 2030, it has to do with cumulative emissions. And if you get there sooner rather than later, the value of cutting those emissions or of cutting the amount of emissions that ultimately are done because of what the electricity you're buying are more important. Basically, when you're dealing with climate change, backloading the solution is almost never the right answer, and so you need to sort of take into consideration that acting soon is really important and maybe more important than how much you do altogether. As is frequently said, winning slowly is another word for losing when you're dealing with this, and therefore, being bold now and doing as much as you can now is something that is valuable. If we were dealing with steady energy prices, this conversation would have a slightly different tone. There's a certain degree of caution and anxiety that is created by all of the uncertainty that there exists in the market, which is relatively less stable now than it has been in the past. It's an ironic thing, because if there is a problem later on, it's likely to be not because of the instability of the renewable, the REX, it's the instability of the underlying amount. If there's a sharp inflation in the electricity price, for example, the base electricity price, the REX will be relatively cheaper compared to the underlying price. So it would be a good thing to sort of be a little nervous about being nervous and to think that it's time really to knuckle down and to do as much as you can now. I know it can't be everything, but it can be a lot. know it can't be everything, but it can be a lot, and you should be as courageous as you could bring yourself to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And before I turn it back to the board, if I could just, we know that the opt-up to the 50% and the 100% was about 7%, but what's the breakdown currently between those who selected default rate versus the basic, if you have it?
I think I do have that handy. Or Talia, do you have that?
So I have the number of accounts in the, oh, and so you're asking the default versus the basic, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I have, Patrick, I have here the 150% options.
Yeah, so I've got the basic, we have a little over 1%. I think we have about 170 participants in there.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Patrick.
So if my math is right, 92% selected default rate then. 7% who opt up, 1% who select the basic, and 92% selected default, right?
That's right.
Does that math work? Yeah, okay. All right, good. All right, so I'll turn it to Boardman.
Just one more mathematical question. I know we're talking about, we can't tie anything to it, but when we're talking about $10 per year at 5%, that's at $600 per year for electricity. I'm assuming, can somebody give me the range or give me if you're at basic versus 100, approximately what your yearly bill is right now? Because I'm assuming it's probably more than 600 more times than not per year. Do you understand my question? If I can get the range of, I know you picked for $600 a year, it's about $10. Don't hold us to that, but can you give me a guesstimate range of what the actual participants' yearly electricity bills are?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurd?
I could start, Talia, if you'd like to jump in. So in the current contract, if you were going to, from the basic to the 100%, it's somewhere around $170, $180 extra a year. So that's on top of that, say, 600 base. And what is also helpful to know is that 600 is for the supply portion of the bill. So there's also the delivery portion that's just ever sourced, and that's about the same amount. It's about another 600. So, yeah.
Thank you. That's what I thought. And I want to ask the Chair, the vote tonight, and I'd like to be aggressive and set a higher percentage, and I'd like to be compared to when other communities are contemplating this, Arlington sort of be in the forefront, although I don't know if we can get to the Newton 80% here tonight. I'm not advocating for that. But am I correct in understanding that the vote that, or am I incorrect, that the vote tonight is to approve and authorize the town manager, the sustainability manager, along with the consultant, to set the, what I think I'm hearing from my colleagues and myself, the most high aggressive rate versus us saying what that rate is tonight?
That's, again, given the uncertainty, that's what I think would be prudent for us because the town manager and the consultant aren't going to have the bids in yet. I can read what the actual vote was from last time, maybe just to, and again, last time, there was a concern about savings in the program. I don't think you're hearing that from anybody here tonight. We're really talking about increasing the percentage of renewables. So the last time, we authorized the town manager to enter a 36-month contract. At that time, there was a goal to maintain town savings. I don't think that's going to be on the table anymore over the length of the contract. But here is the part that I think is relevant, increasing the mix of renewables to a percent that the town manager finds feasible and sustains our membership in the default. Now, I think we could provide a range. We want it no lower than this, maybe have a goal on the upper end and give him some flexibility there, depending on what happens. But again, I'll open that up to the board. Mr. Helmet, did you have anything further, Mrs. Mahan on that?
Nope. I'll make a motion unless somebody else does, if it doesn't get made.
Yeah, I don't have a motion, but I think, I just want to, you know, I've traveled from starting this discussion a few weeks ago, thinking we should preserve savings. And I've come out of this realizing that, you know, I think a lot of people have asked us to raise it to the maximum. Well, the maximum will be 100%. But I think that we have to be honest that that would almost certainly have an effect of getting people to just drop out, you know, and drop down to zero. So I think the real maximum for me is that whatever the level is, that will preserve participation. Because if we go to 100%, we could lose more renewable utilization than we gain. And I think it's really important for the public to understand that that's the parameter that we have to, we're responsible for. If the town manager and our consultant and Ms. Fox felt like we could do 100% now and preserve participation, I'd be there. You know, I think there's a lot to be said for getting ahead of 2030. I don't know, you know, and that's where I think we need their expertise, particularly since we don't have the bids. And the last thing I just want to say, Mr. Hanlon referenced his letter, and I think it was a wonderful letter, and the most wonderful part was the last line, where he said, urging us to resolve uncertainties in favor of the climate. And I think for me, there are going to be, we're talking about the edges here. There are going to be uncertainties in where we risk. I want to risk and flavor the climate. And I think I'm really comfortable talking to our constituents and saying that that's what we did. I don't know where the number is. I want it to be high. But that's kind of how I'm thinking. And I will leave it to those of you who've done this before to formulate a motion.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and again, to Mr. Hanlon's point that he made, sort of along the same lines of what my colleagues have said, I'm certainly aware that I think the residents want us to be as aggressive as possible with the amount of renewables that we put in the default rate. And I 100% agree with that goal. And like Mr. Hanlon said, as I look at the increases and the potential fluctuations, I mean, again, I don't want to speak lightly of price increases for people, but I'm not, I don't look at the potential price increases as the barrier to us going to 100% or a higher amount. I think it would be nice for the board to say, hey, you know, we're going to put it 100% to show that we're behind fighting the climate crisis. But we also have to strategize when we do this to make sure that not only are we making a statement, but we're also affecting the maximum amount of change and the maximum amount of carbon reductions that we can through this program. And so that's the considerations that we have to make that might make this vote a disappointment for some of our residents. And that's just something as being elected official that you have to deal with sometimes. But I mean, I think from a couple of the options that we've seen, where we have the four tiers, and it sounds like we could go to three tiers, I mean, I think we should be aggressive, as aggressive as we can be, and authorize the manager to be as aggressive as he can be with the amount of renewables that we put in the default rate, and then just leave it to the 0% that we have to have in there and the 100% that we have to have in there. Because it just seems a little confusing when you have something in between. And with the three rates, in my mind, I'm thinking that we'd set it around 50%. That might be too aggressive based on the contract that the manager has to negotiate from ourselves. But I mean, I think we do have to put some sort of a, so I would advocate, given the manager guidance for a three-tiered rate system, and put a range of 30% to 50% based on, and say, whatever he is, based on his negotiations, within that range, what is the most beneficial contract that he can negotiate on behalf of the town?
And so that would be the basic default and 100%. That would be the, okay.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair. Sure. Is the, Mr. Hurd, is the 30%, 30%, 50%, is that inclusive of the state minimum or on top of the state minimum, which is around 20%?
So I was looking at the rates as we had it here with the 11%. So
On top of it.
On top of it.
On top of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, I look at the range from zero, so the state minimum is 20%. I'm looking at 0 to 100 from that perspective.
Yeah, so that would be the 30% plus the 20% then for, right, okay, all right. Any other comments? I have a couple. And Mr. Diggins?
So, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, so it's not at all clear to me that even if we, you know, well, first off, I mean, what is the maximum that we can raise it by? I'm not sure to whom that question is. I imagine it's either Adam or one of our guests.
Mr. Chaplin?
Are you asking, could we go to 100% if it was the will of the board?
Well, no, I'm just wondering, what, so the state next year or '23 is going to be at 20%? So then for us to get to 100%, it would be 80? We'd be plus 80?
Right. But the state goes up by 2% a year.
By 2% a year, okay, gotcha, gotcha. So then, so then, but when we make our contract, we are going to be locking in a percentage, or does that percentage fluctuate or change as the state steps up?
We would lock in our percentage, but then be the beneficiary of step-ups in the state program. But our local percentage would be locked in at 1%.
I got you, I got you. So if we go the maximum, then we would have every incentive to do a longer contract, which could obviously bring our rates down? Yes, okay.
Well, I mean, I think based on what Patrick said earlier. Yeah. And depending on what the bids actually are, when Patrick and his team at Good Energy comes to us and said, today's the good bid day, here are the bids that are in hand, 12-month, 24-month, 36-month, whatever's most beneficial.
So we get bid information before we commit? Is that the deal? We don't have to commit? I thought maybe we had to make a commitment before we went to bid.
So ultimately, the way that, all I can speak to is the way this has played out the past two times. And it's been that, you know, with about one or two days' notice, the team from Good Energy will email us or call us and say, Wednesday, our projections, our experts are telling us Wednesday will be a very good day to bid these costs. Can you be available at 11 o'clock? And we'll say, yes, we're available at 11 o'clock. And they will come in with, you know, they'll literally get those bids, email to them while we're sitting in the room. And then based on what those bids are the past two times, we've made the decision about what we think we can do for a default under that guidance the board gave, with a focus on both in the past, providing savings or maintaining savings, as well as maintaining as many people as possible in the default.
Right.
Given what the board is, the contours of what the board has discussed so far, we would sit in that room again, focused on maximizing the default while protecting the default, aimed at not having people migrate out of the default into the basic.
Right. And on what basis would you be determining that people are going to migrate out? Because that's what my question was about, the elasticities. I mean, it seems like we have no real elasticity data.
We would use, we would depend, again, on Patrick and his colleagues at Good Energy, looking at what they think market rates are going to be or what utility pricing is going to be. And ultimately, the way this has played out in the past is the team from Good Energy saying, if you go over X cents a kilowatt hour, our fear would be you would see a larger number of people migrating out of the default. And that's based on just a rough understanding of what their projections show utility rates will be in the upcoming periods.
Right.
I mean, and the pictures, this hasn't actually been said tonight or with any level of detail. You saw on that chart, changes every six months, right? The utility sets their rate every six months. It's high in the winter, January to June, lower usually in what's the summer rate setting period, which is July to December. So when Good Energy looks at this, they're going to try to like, look at it across the board. And we almost always want to be a winner, or at least even in that winter setting. You don't want to lose in the winter because you don't want people to leave the program altogether. And you have an expectation, you might not win in the summer because summer rates are always lower because you don't have the heat load and the electricity load at the same time. But ultimately, with Good Energy's expertise, they're going to give us their best, you know, projection or assumption for where we'll be at a safe number and keeping people in the program.
Right. All right. Well, I think, I mean, if we give you discretion to be as aggressive as possible, seemingly, we're aiming, it seems like we're going to have a floor at 30. I mean, I'm fine with that. And I'll just say, one other way to discuss this is like, right now, we're seeing, like, let's say, if we do the X percentage, it's $50 a year. If we said $500 every 10 years, it would be like, oh, my goodness, that's a lot. But if we say $5 a month, you know, I mean, that goes down a little more easily too. So I think it's just really what kind of unit time we discuss this in that can make it easier for people to accept. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Yeah, so just on the percentages that were provided, and I'm actually happy to hear that the basic was only 1%. I mean, we know now at 11%, people aren't opting down. If they're entering the program, they're coming in at the default rate at 92%. And for whatever reason, whether it's education, whether it's the way the program is presented, or people just don't want to go up, only 7% are going up above the default. So there's room on the default, and perhaps there's a way to get the 100% up. I'm questioning my mind whether there should be a category between the default and 100. But I think given, maybe less is better for this time period, and just have a default and 100%. But it's, I think we've all been struck by the comments that we've received. And I just noticed a big difference from three years ago to today, the urgency to do something. So I'm just speaking for myself. I mean, I could support a target of 30%, but giving the manager some, you know, some room, depending on what comes in on the bids. But maybe put a floor too, that it shouldn't be below, a goal of 30%, but no event less than 20%, given where things are. And maybe that's too broad a goal. But I think you have opt-ups. The nice thing about this program having opt-ups, you set a default, you want to maintain the default rate, you want to increase the percentage of renewables and give people an opportunity to go up. But that's the nice thing about having an opt-up provision. So you don't want to go too, too high in respecting what happened in Newton. Good luck to them. But I think we want to maintain the default rate and encourage people to opt up and see how that goes. And three years from now, we can take another look at it. But that's just my individual comments based on what we've had here. Mr. Helmet?
Just a quick question. Do we know, has anyone said, for thinking about whether we have, how many gradations we have, when people opt up, do they, do we have most of them going to 100%, mostly going to 50%? You know, is that?
Just about all 100, I think, from what Mr. Chaplin told me earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, to clarify, are you looking to maintain the four options?
No, I was just thinking out loud. I thought maybe we should have four. But clearly, the 50% option has not been well-received, hasn't been used. So maybe it's better to have fewer options. So I could, I would support your use of three options.
Because I think most people that take the time to go through the process to opt up and look at the actual monetary difference are going to go for the 100%. That's why I think we should, and if we're going to push the default to somewhere closer to the middle, I think it makes sense to have the three.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. And I'm looking down the road. If, three years from now, if we find a lot of people still not opting up, then I think I would go back to a midpoint. But anyway, at this point, Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to establish the ACE default rate amongst the three-tiered system discussed by the board tonight with a goal of no less than 20%. And I don't want to say, but up to 30%. I'd say the goal of no less than 20%, but leave it to the manager that when the bids come in, the board would anticipate perhaps 30% or higher, but not too much higher, would be our goal for right now. So vote to approve and establish the town manager So vote to approve and establish the town manager to set the ACE default rate after the bids come in and that process plays out, a minimum of 20%, a goal of 30% or more. Is that appropriate?
And can I second that? And Mrs. Mahan, and just add just the word wording that with the target of maintaining, of setting the rate such that it will, it won't drive people out of the system? Or I didn't say that very artfully. To set the rate as high as possible without causing a flood from the default rate.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes. If I wanted to see if my colleagues were willing to set a higher floor, what would be the best way to do that? Would I offer my own motion or ask for an amendment?
Yeah, I think you could ask for amendment. That's.
So, you know, if my colleagues would be, would support, I would, I would, thinking again about Mr. Hanlon's exhortation to to resolve uncertainties in favor of the climate, being 25%, I would feel better about. I'd be, I'd feel great about 30%. I don't know if we're there yet. But if there's support, I would love for us to try to push it a little bit.
I'd be happy to do that, but I just want, could I ask the chair your thoughts or the manager? Us setting percentages and everything, everything is really contingent upon how those bids come in.
Yes.
So I don't want to limit it. I'd be happy to discuss the 25%, but that's that even further tie the manager and Ms. Fox and, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on Patrick's. Mr. Roach's hands. What do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, we have a goal of 30%. And only because we don't know what's coming. I think the message to the manager is we'd like to see 30%. And if it, if it's feasible, even higher. But if, if bids come in and it, and it, it looks like there, there could be a drop in the default, I, I don't want that range to be so limiting to the manager. But I, so I understand what you're saying, but I, I think if, Mr. Chapdeline, you're getting a message from us where, where we think that the range should be. But Mr. Hurd?
And again, we trust the town manager to handle this contract appropriately. We could say, not to overcomplicate this motion, but a floor of 25% with giving the manager discretion in the event that pursuant to the bids and the advice of our consultants, going to 25% or higher would cause less participation.
That's fine. Whenever we can get back. To me, a good motion is something that's just general, which is to authorize the manager to negotiate and saddle a default rate. We can add whatever we want to that, but I know the manager has heard our sentiments. I just don't want to. So I'm, I'm fine. Whatever gets us to the vote.
Okay, all right. So I think we'll get to a vote. Do we have a second on Mr. Hurd's amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And I think the language that Mrs. Mahan provided, you know, with that one, with that one change and knowing that feasibility or diminution in the default is something that needs to be considered. I think we're ready for a vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so on a motion made by Mr. Hurd, made, made by Mr. Hurd, no, made by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Hahn.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut? Yes. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Fox. Thank you, Mr. Roach, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, consent agenda, reappointment to the Arlington Redevelopment Board, Ken Lau?
Who approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Attorney Hahn? Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Do you have an am's vote? Okay, thank you.
I'm getting chilly, so if anyone's watching me at home, I'm only sitting like this. It's not body language that I'm frustrated. I'm just cold.
Attorney Hahn, you threw me off when you were looking at me and you said, Mr. Diggins. I thought I was supposed to vote again.
Keeping this letter close.
Turn the heat on. Oh, my Lord. We still haven't got heat ability.
We have a lot of quick items on our agenda tonight. Item four, presentation and requested adoption, Arlington Housing Plan, Jennifer Raitt, Director of Department of Planning and Community Development, Kelly Linema, Assistant Director of Department of Planning and Community Development. Good evening, Ms. Raitt. Good evening, Ms. Linema.
Evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss the Arlington Housing Plan. I'm going to kick it off. I'm Jennifer Raitt. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development for the town, and I'm joined by
Kelly Linema, the Assistant Director of the Department of Planning and Community Development.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having us, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the support of the manager and the board's time and attention tonight. I'm going to give you an overview, sort of a background, before we start our discussion. So if you'll, if that is okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Following the adoption of the master plan by the Arlington Redevelopment Board and its endorsement by town meeting in 2015, the Department of Planning and Community Development began implementation, including moving forward with the first recommendation in the housing section of that plan, quote, "planned for affordable housing by creating a housing production plan." The plan was adopted by the ARB and the Select Board in 2016, but it expired this past November in 2021. The plan was expansive with many broad as well as very specific goals and recommended actions. We accomplished several, but not all, of the strategies in that plan, which included amending the zoning bylaw to allow for mixed use, parking reductions, and accessory dwelling units, helping the housing corporation of Arlington to develop 48 new permanently affordable housing units, providing funds to preserve existing affordable housing, including updates to Arlington Housing Authority properties, creating six new affordable homes through our inclusionary zoning bylaw through mixed-use development, establishing the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as well as seeking funds for the trust through a real estate transfer fee. It was important to update the plan as it has proven to be very helpful as a guide for many of our planning and community development efforts, including community conversations, rather, and education. The housing plan helps us better understand Arlington's housing needs and demand, development constraints and opportunities, and improves our vision and shapes outcomes for future housing. Additionally, the plan helps us to control our 40B destiny, if you will, as it helps the town to add to our housing inventory, the subsidized housing inventory, which is monitored by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The plan also helps us to address the unmet housing needs of residents who make low and moderate incomes in our community, to influence the type, amount, and location of mixed income and affordable housing, and to possibly prevent unwanted 40B development through a certified housing production plan in favor of residential development that complies with local zoning. Due to our prior housing production plan, the town currently has a certified plan, which allows our ZBA to deny comprehensive permit applications that do not align with local needs. We started working on updating the plan for the next five years in late 2020. And as you know, that was during the pandemic. We provided a range of unique engagement opportunities to provide us with input throughout the housing planning process. These opportunities went above and beyond the standard required two forums. They provided education and outreach opportunities and helped us to meet people where they were at, literally at their kitchen tables, by providing what was called a, quote, "meeting in a box." We offered that meeting types, that meeting type twice, attended farmers' markets, provided an interactive mapping opportunity, conducted surveys, held forums, had interviews, and also held a community conversation on fair housing while we worked on a parallel effort to create a fair housing action plan. The Arlington Housing Plan that is before you tonight, once it is adopted by this board, will be sent to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for approval. The plan is consistent with DHCD's HPP guidelines and the purposes of Chapter 40B Housing Production Plan in that the plan analyzes demographic and housing data for an understanding of where Arlington is today, where it has been, and where it needs to go, identifies local housing needs and how those needs relate to conditions throughout the region, recognizes the town's efforts to create affordable housing and how the town could do more, identifies housing development barriers and opportunities, educates one, our community, about Arlington's need for more affordable housing and a wider variety of housing types. And lastly, guides future affordable housing development to a variety of places in Arlington, both along the obvious roadway corridors, such as Mass Ave and Broadway, as well as across the town's varied neighborhoods. We're excited about the many opportunities that this plan provides and initiatives that are starting to move forward, including that the plan will help the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust Fund with the development of its action plan, focus funding priorities for the Community Preservation Act and Community Development Black Grant Program, as well as ARPA funding, encourage new partnerships and relationships, including more opportunities to partner with the Arlington Housing Authority, and to help advance future amendments to our regulations to accommodate redevelopment. I want to thank all who participated in the plan development, specifically the Housing Plan Implementation Committee and Kelly Linema for her leadership, as well as our consultant team, Barrett Planning Group and Horsey-Witten Group. With that, I will stop there and turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Raitt. Okay, I, I think, I think we are going to have public comments for this this evening, but I will start with comments or questions from board members. Mr. Helmut?
This will seem a little bit out of the blue, but some of the feedback we've been receiving from residents about expressing concern about increasing the number of households in town revolves around infrastructure, specifically our water and sewer capacity. And Mr. Mr. Chair, perhaps through you, the town manager might comment on his opinion and that of his DPW leadership and staff about the town's infrastructure capacity in that regard, if there are any concerns about what is contemplated in this plan and in its targets with respect to that infrastructure.
Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to Mr. Helmut. So I have talked about this with the DPW director. And the primary concern about our water and sewer systems capacity revolves much more around what's called inflow and infiltration. And that is where there are segments of the system where water, groundwater usually, or potentially even leaking water from some of our water pipes is infiltrating the sewer system and thereby creating more flow than can be processed at the Deer Island Treatment Plant during a storm event. There's far less concern about adding just daily flow from an increase in the number of households. When a significant project goes forward, whether it be something like the Sims Project a number of years ago or a matter like the 1165R Mass Ave Project, the Myrac property that this board discussed some time ago now, there's always discussion about the water and sewer system to make sure that valves and pressure release valves and other systems are adequate. But my understanding is the actual capacity of the system to handle flow, especially outflow, is not a matter of great concern, given the way the system is currently constructed.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Comments from, from board members? Okay, if there are people, now it's, let me just see what, it's about 9:15. And I, we've got a bunch of things on, so let's do this. We'll, we'll take public comment later than 9:45. And if we get done before then, great. So go ahead, Ms. Maher.
Joy, the first person is Joanne Preston.
Okay.
Am I speaking?
Yes, you are. Yep. Go right ahead, Ms. Preston.
Yeah, right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joanne Preston. I'm a Commissioner of the Arlington Housing Authority, and I have some comments on the housing plan that are made in consultation with our executive director. I want to start off by saying, in the 2016 housing plan, the Arlington Housing Authority is described as a vital partner in maintaining and increasing housing diversity and affordability. No such description is in the 2022 plan. Instead, the housing, Arlington Housing Authority is described in a number of inaccurate and negative statements, which I would like to ask that are corrected because this is a five-year plan, and the plan is used often in funding decisions. And I'm afraid we would be negatively impacted. There are too many to say in this short amount of time, so I'd just like to take the ones on page three. The first one, the Arlington Housing Authority has not actively pursued new housing in a long time. That should be replaced with, after 50 years of building 715 units of deeply affordable housing for over 1,000 low-income residents, the Arlington Housing Authority is now modernizing its housing stock. But at the same time, we have applied in the last year for funding to increase our deeply affordable housing. So that's wrong. Two, the Arlington Housing Authority lacks resources to manage the properties it already owns. That should be replaced with, despite a tight budget, the Arlington Housing Authority is able to manage day-to-day maintenance. I'd like to note that the Arlington Housing Authority has an active maintenance plan, has been regularly meeting its goals, and has tenant participation in monthly maintenance meetings. Three, the Arlington Housing Authority manages five public housing developments. Well, it also has five condominiums and two small houses. All are under the state requirements for deeply affordable housing that meet or exceed those on the subsidized housing inventories. Four, a house and a condominium which are not income restricted. Well, they're under the Arlington Housing Authority. However, I would like to replace it with a house and a condominium that should be included in the subsidized housing inventory, as they meet all requirements. It's just a matter of submitting paperwork. These corrections should be made, and with many more, that I don't have time to talk. My great concern is several of these negative comments have already been on the online newspaper. And I was unable to talk the reporter out of them because, after all, they're part of the formal housing plan. And I, I can imagine, as we move forward with the Arlington Housing Authority now on creating new low-income housing units, that these negative, there are other ones too, negative statements about the housing authority will be used in making decisions.
Excuse me, Ms. Preston. You're at about three and a half minutes, so if you can wrap up, please.
Oh, my last sentence. Thank you. So I wish we would seriously consider the need to change these comments about the Arlington Housing Authority, as it is the largest entity for affordable housing in Arlington, and it deserves to be recognized as such. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
If you have a phone, if you can twist it because you're, you're not, your shoulder. Yeah, we got it.
Is that any better?
Yeah, that's better.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Carl Wagner. I live at 30 Edgell Road in Arlington. Thank you to the chair and to the board for hearing me tonight. I've been present at the Housing Production Plan's presentation to the ARB, and I made a lot of the meetings around this before also. I, I think this plan is really faulty. And I hope that people on this call, as members of the public, will recognize that you five are our only elected political officials who can stop this faulty plan from going through. It doesn't mean that a housing plan in general is a bad idea. It means that this one, which was produced by a consultant, who should have known better because the consultant also worked on the master plan, would reduce the diversity of housing in Arlington. And the production plan was presented terribly to the ARB. I'm not sure they even saw the final version they voted on. The public did not see the final version, which included at the very end reducing single-family zoning to make it two-family zoning. to make it two-family zoning, and, most crucially, to allow three families in the two-family zones. Those versions, at least, were not visible to the public that I could see. I wanted to remind the select board that the ARB and the Planning Department were specifically warned by the town meeting in 2019, after they tried to put through density proposals, that the town needed to be consulted, and the people in the town needed to have a say in any kind of density proposals. And the 2019 resulting town meeting was the density articles were rejected. On December 16th, 2021, this plan was presented by the consultant to the ARB. And the lead consultant said, "What we're doing by increasing the zoning to make two families in the one family and three families in the two family is we're going to cause housing choice for higher-income people who can pay for more housing in prices. This housing will increase the cost of Arlington's housing. It won't reduce it. We don't need to be increasing the cost of Arlington's housing. We need to be helping the people who live here. We need to reduce their taxes, not increase them," which this proposal will do. There are other problems in the plan. You can see I'm focusing on the two families, the single family and three families in the two-family zone. Another huge problem was that the state requires this plan to take into consideration changes affected in services like schools. And the plan gives only cursory time to that. Finally, I know I'm probably running low on time, but I'd ask you, select board members, you actually live in Arlington, like the people on this call who are concerned about this. The Planning Department head doesn't live here. You have to vote today on something that could really, really hurt Arlington. Do you want your names to be attached to something that would turn Arlington into an urban, expensive place? I ask you, please reject this until it comes back with a much better version. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
The next speaker is John Warden.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say you. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Ward.
Yes, thank you. Am I here? Yeah, here I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Before I start, and for, we only, both my wife and I wish to address the meeting. We both got our, like, put our names in. And she's agreed that I should speak first. And if you would also recognize her at a subsequent time, that would be appreciated because we both have thoughts on this problem. Okay. Well, excuse me. Going back to the, I've been involved with zoning issues in the town of Arlington, I'm sure, for any, more, longer than anyone else in this virtual room, I guess you could call it. Going back to my first town meeting in 1970, I stood with the people of East Arlington, fighting unsuccessfully on, too bad, the first Mugar project, which wanted to plant high-rise, zoning which would have permitted the Mugar people to put high-rise residential buildings in the swamp. A few years later, we found out that it wasn't a swamp. It was a wetland, and you can't really do too much in a wetland. So they came back with a 40B, which will, which ultimately was approved, that will let them put something in the, some parts of the wetland and avoid local environmental protections. But of this, the reason I go back this far in history, and I've been involved in many, many zoning issues in the past 50-odd years, is that I've seen a lot of plans in town meeting reports and annual reports and this report, that report. We used to have a newspaper that reported these kind of things. And this is the worst one I've ever seen. It is, not only has it sort of mistakes that Ms. Preston elaborated on in her first speaker, but it has more terrible ideas than Mr. Wagner spoke about, the elimination of the single-family zone. That's a real blow against homeowner choice. People want a two-family house, have plenty of opportunities in the many two-family zones and the two-family zones that are pre-existing in the single-family district. But people in the single-family district, if you're going to do away with it, they don't have that choice to live in a single-family district, and I don't think that's fair. In basically, and I will, this plan, if adopted and implemented, would destroy the town of Arlington as we know it. Now, there's some folks, appointed employees and board members, who think that's okay. I hope that you, elected members, elected by the people, will not think it's okay to destroy our town, and that you will stand up and look at this plan, and I hope you've read it, and I hope you find that the many bizarre, new, crazy ideas that are in there are inappropriate for Arlington. Remember, the master plan, which was worked on not by a small committee and by some consultants, but by a large group over a period of years and approved by town meeting, said, "The only housing we need is affordable housing and senior housing." This plan does almost nothing for affordable housing and doesn't even mention a senior house. Not one thing.
Mr. Ward, I'm going to have to stop you there. You're at about three and a half minutes, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next speaker is Amy Cahill.
Still waiting for her? Okay.
Cahill, thank, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I, let's see. I think also Mrs. Warden wants to speak. I think that's what Mr. Warden was saying at the end. Okay, great. I wrote to you this afternoon, this morning. I hope you got a chance to read it. I agree with Mr. Wagner and the previous speaker, Mr. Warden. I just, I just want to approach this like I'm a civil engineer, and I can't even fathom the proposed changes without a study of the town's infrastructure. So I'm just going to speak to you as a professional civil engineer, and I don't understand, like, you know, the response from the town manager of infiltration and inflow. Of course, that's an issue in any sewer system. And I described in my letter infiltration is like groundwater getting into cracked pipe. Inflow is sources that we know, say, sump pumps going into sewer. And that's, yeah, that's clean water getting into the sewer. And yes, as far as calculating flow, you can't ignore adding additional raw wastewater into the system when the system is old. And you just can't blanketly, you know, say it's okay. You have to look at it and study each area and its miles of sewer. So I just, the report, I was, I couldn't believe it. They only have two paragraphs, and it's titled "Water and Sewer." And it's titled "Water and Sewer," but there's no mention of the sewer. And what they do mention about the water is so minimal. They mention a project that MWA is doing. You know, clearly, they just pulled it from a website somewhere. It's so irresponsible. I just don't even know how to emphasize this to you. I just hope that you do read this section that I'm talking about and then read my letter, because I tried to, you know, briefly describe how an engineer sizes a sewer, just so you know, you know? And we, you know, we literally count the lots, okay? So like, you know, you take a street and you look at the zoning and you count the lots. So say if there's 50 lots, you say, okay, well, how many bedrooms per lot can we expect for a residential area? And then if it's a commercial use, you estimate it based on what you think the building's going to be used for. And this is standard engineering practice. And it's not, you know, it works so far, right? But it doesn't, you know, we can't just blanketly change it without consideration and study. So, you know, if this aligns with the water system plan for the town and the sewer, you know, I'm sure there's a sewer plan for the town, then let me know, and that would give me comfort. But as far as I could read in this report, there was no information, no coordination with the Department of Public Works. I unders, like, I think it's just very irresponsible to say, oh, okay, the only issue is II. If you're planning on changing a neighborhood, and I gave a scenario of a certain amount of houses tied to a pipe. And sure, if you're upstream, you're okay. But if you're the house downstream-
Excuse me, Ms. Cahill?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a number of speakers tonight, and you're at three and a half minutes. But I appreciate the written comments and your comments this evening.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Don Seltzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don Seltzer, Irving Street. Way back in January, I wrote to this board with a detailed account of some of the deficiencies in this housing production plan. I'll try to briefly summarize these points. The state guidelines require that housing plans use the most recent available census data for demographics and housing stock. It's written right there in the guidelines. Most of the research for this plan was done prior to the release of the 2020 U.S. Census data last summer and instead relies upon out-of-date American community survey data. In a moment, I will explain why that is significant. This plan was also prepared too early to account for the MBTA housing mandate, which will significantly shape our housing and zoning decisions in the next five years, particularly in the Alway floodplain. A second flaw in this plan is that it promotes the contentious issue of eliminating single-family zoning districts. This goes far beyond the scope of what the state requires, a plan that addresses developing affordable housing. Barrett Consulting, the author of the plan, was clear that this particular proposal had nothing to do with affordability but was to promote greater choice among a certain demographic. It seems that we do not have a sufficient supply of $1 million-plus duplex condos to meet the market demand. An affordable housing plan is supposed to address the needs of those making less than median family income, not those making more than 200% of AMI. But the most glaring deficiency of this five-year plan is that it fails to include the required infrastructure analysis on the capacity to accommodate anticipated future growth, most notably in our schools. Our previous housing plan devoted four pages to this type of analysis. This consultant has written but a single paragraph which dismisses school capacity as being of no concern based solely upon the 2015 McKibben forecast. And this is where the 2020 census becomes vital. Arlington's population is growing much faster than predicted back in 2015. We have already reached a population level that the McKibben Report predicted we would not see for at least a decade or two. That 2015 school enrollment forecast is rapidly becoming obsolete. It did not anticipate our actual population growth, and it did not take into account increased housing growth nor changing family demographics, which would result from new denser housing. We need a housing plan that takes these into consideration. We need to have a clear idea of what actual enrollment growth will be in the next decade and whether we can accommodate it with larger class sizes, having to rent portable classrooms again, or if we'll need to plan for a new $50 million elementary school. That is what we need in a five-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seltzer.
The next speaker is Josephine Babiaras.
Maybe having a little technical difficulty.
Oh, there, it looks like you need to unmute. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. My name is Josephine Babiaras. I live on Edge Hill Road in Arlington. And I second the comments against this particular proposal. I have a concrete example. At the end of my road, at the corner of Edge Hill and Johnson, there was a single-family home. It is turned into two condominiums. The list price for one was $1 million, I think, $1 million 30, and the other one was $1 million and $100,000. It was on a corner, so there was a capability of having a different curb cut. And there is virtually no yard or any kind of setback. This house was actually in a two-family zone. The remainder of my street, along with many others in the single-family area, have yard lots of maybe 500,000 square feet. I don't know how you would build with zoning and all of the code requirements a two-family house, given access. Maybe you don't think there would be a need for a, two driveways, but people tend to use garages for storage more than anything else. And I don't know what to do with the crowding. Arlington is a town, not a city. And I think we lose a great deal by forcing single-family zoning into two-family. I would urge the board to postpone this decision and require additional information about how this could actually work in the town of Arlington using the single-family zoning areas you proposed to change as templates. Is it possible to have fire and ambulance access? What about the curb cuts that you would need? How is that going to impact the different code requirements? Do we have sufficient, in addition to the requirements for education and requirements for the sewers that have been talked about, do we have sufficient police protection? Do we need to increase fire protection because of the increased density? So I would really urge the board to require additional information before you take this momentous vote. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Warden.
Okay.
Good evening, Mrs. Warden.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Patricia Warden, precinct eight. Thank you. Whatever else I say tonight, I want to be clear that this housing plan is a disgrace. It will destroy Arlington if enabled. There is almost nothing in it to help ensure sustainable climate provisions in housing production or to provide affordable housing, although the master plan specified that the housing Arlington needs is affordable housing and senior housing. The report is a blueprint for enrichment and exploitation of Arlington for developers, landowners, hoarding landowners, and their heirs. It is a mendacious document replete with false statements. If you, our select board, choose to approve it, then you are choosing to condone false statements. Look at my testimony. And to enrich developers and landowners at the expense of taxpayers, mega-million-dollar overrides, and the deburs- overrides, and the debased residents of Arlington and those in danger of homelessness and displacement. What is the purpose of these hearings? And are these hearings just a charade? The report should have and could have recommended for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to dedicate its funds to help the Arlington Housing Authority's mentionance of its large inventory of serviced affordable units and to enable purchase and renovation of existing market units for use as housing authority units available to those families making less than 30% of area median income. That would have brought the housing policy, housing plan into affordability requirement compliance with the state. Right now, the housing plan is not compliant and should be rejected. As a result, we see the Affordable Housing Trust Fund now competing against the housing authority for funds without giving any commitment as to how their funds will be used for affordable housing and if they will be used instead for incentivizing undesirable development, such as environmentally damaging 40B projects, which are favored by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund chair and very lucrative for developers. Arlington now is about to experience a regime change. With a new manager, we should make sure that she or he is not saddled with this defective plan. Please do not approve this housing plan in its current form. Thank you very much. Let me just say that I have participated in the housing passage implementation initiative for three years, and I now get three minutes to discuss my experience there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warden. Okay, so that concludes public comment. Thank you for the comments and the written submissions that we received as well, so, and I will look to the board for any further comments, questions. Mr. Hurd?
So I think there's a lot to unpack with 110-page plan, but, I mean, I would say that this plan is a result of a lot of work, and the town, the planning department, and residents who have been involved in the process. And as you go through 110 pages of recommendations, you're not gonna, I don't think anybody is gonna read through and agree with every statement that they see in the plan, but we've certainly seen what the benefits, and we've heard what the benefits are of having the plan in place. So though I don't, again, I don't think we're here to say that we agree with every word and every line that's been put into this plan, but as a whole, this plan is the sum of all the efforts in town to look at what our housing stock is, look at what our housing needs are, what the barriers are in what, where we go from here. And I, I, I support the plan, and I'd like to move approval of the plan.
To adopt.
To adopt the plan. Yep. And again, there's parts of the plan that, I think one of the most controversial parts that's mentioned in the plan that we've heard here time and time again is the elimination of single-family zoning, and we're all Town Meeting members, and we're all about to take this, the answer to that aspect of this plan, we're gonna hear in the next couple of months as to whether or not the town's ready for that. So there are long-term goals here, there's short-term goals here, and some will come together quickly, some will take some time, but, you know, I'm very happy with the efforts of the town, with the planning department, and our town manager, town staff, and everyone that, I'm sure just about every member that works at Town Hall has some hand in putting this together, and, you know, I think it is a good statement of what our goals are, what our needs are, and a path to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Anybody else wish to? Mr. Diggins?
I'll second that, in, in having been a part of the process, you know, and as Mr. Hurd said, I mean, it's a straw man, in a sense to say, it's not perfect, but it, we, it's a good iteration, you know, and we will iterate on it again in five years, you know, and, and we will listen to people's critiques, being issues, being with it, and, and, and deal with them accordingly, I mean, with respect to how we execute on this plan and then how we formulate the next one. So, so, as some would say, onward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Yeah, I appreciate what my colleagues are saying. It is not possible to get a plan of this complexity and to agree with everything in it, you know, and I think that's not the point of the plan. The plan is to give us a roadmap and a menu, because we need to address the problem, and, you know, and I think I would respectfully disagree with some of the residents who, you know, who spoke with great conviction. I think this plan does a lot to, to try to do meaningful things to support affordable housing. Our problem is not a lack of vision in affordable housing, it's a lack of tools and resources. And a lot of that flows down from the federal and from the state level, frankly. There's things that we're trying to do with the real estate transfer fee, I think, that would do a great deal towards making some of this possible. So I think in fairness, this plan contemplates a lot that would do that, and I think our staff and, and the town work hard on that. The one thing that gives me some pause is the single-family zoning issue, and that's just because we are at a decision point right now. I think we're about to find out. I think on Monday, while the ARB feels about it, we'll shortly find out how Town Meeting feels about it, and although, you know, notwithstanding what I just said, that we're not gonna find everything that we like in, or that we necessarily are ready for, it does seem poignant to me that we're at a place where we are going to, for good or for ill, tackle this issue head-on right now and get an answer right now. And if this is a five-year plan, I kinda wanna know, because once we adopt it, we adopt it, it's ours, and we're saying that we wanna do this. And again, I know, you know, there's 110 things, pages in it, so I, I, I don't know, I haven't known a motion or amendment. I'd like to hear, I think, from, from our final member here, thoughts on that. That's just kinda, I'm just pointing out this moment in time that we're at with this particular issue, given the community sentiment. And I, you know, I'm conscious that, you know, I've often said to people, I said this when I was campaigning for the seat last year, I think maybe all three candidates said, you know, that we're intrigued by that possibility and probably not ready for it. So, you know, I think that we just, you know, we have to grapple with that, and it doesn't necessarily mean it comes out of the plan, but I'm just putting it out there.
Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you. And as Mr. Hurd stated in his motion, this is to adopt a plan, adopt a framework, to replace the plan that's, I think, existed for five years as this will, moving forward, we need to have something. I do want to, and, and again, this is not taking any changes, it's adopting a framework. Anything substantive has to go to Town Meeting, the redevelopment board, and then the Town Meeting, and sometimes this select board gets to weigh in on it. So this, you know, this, nothing here got approved. We adopted a plan, a framework. I, I do wanna say one thing with respect to our colleague on the Arlington Housing Authority. If I could ask the Planning Director, Ms. Wright, from, from here on and sort of moving forward, when we have reiterations of certain parts of this housing plan that we've adopted, especially on two of the points regarding the housing authority, if we could just sort of reframe that in the sense of, you know, the housing authority does have properties that they're managing, and I don't know if, well, I think we can moving forward, instead of saying, you know, lacks the proper resources, if we could sort of word that as, you know, as continuously working for state as well as town funding for CDBG, you know, if we could kind of reframe that, 'cause I know with the electrical boxes, with the new roof, things like that, with the new executive director, with current veteran colleagues on the housing authority, as well as two new additions of Ms. Preston and Ms. Bedelia, that the board really is, you know, they've gone to, applied for CPA funding, they've come to CDBG, which Ms. Wright also oversees that and has been instrumental with Ms. Lineema in terms of a last-minute request or two that we get, did get from the housing authority that CDBG was part of that. So we can't ask the consultant to completely rewrite this report, but as we do move forward, I would respectfully request that we not adopt those two particular points, word-for-word from the consultant, and we do rephrase them to properly reflect where we are right now. I'm not saying what was said in the past, I'm not gonna, you know, judge on that, but and that's just, you know, you know, not, not a criticism, just, I understand where the comments came from, you know, perhaps two, three years ago, but we are where we are right now, and, and again, I wanna stress that Ms. Wright and Ms. Lineema have been working with the housing authority in a more increased capacity as they've been appearing before us in, in different avenues that are afforded to them. So, sorry, I didn't mean to go long in the tooth on that. I just wanted to raise that, and I know from working with both these women that, you know, they're, they're definitely in agreement with that because, you know, we have been working with the housing authority and our colleagues on there, and we'll continue to do that, so, thank you so much.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Yeah, and I also wanna thank Ms. Wright, Ms. Lineema, and, and the entire, the Housing Production Plan Implementation Committee for all their work. There are 42, I believe, strategies that are, that are in, in the program, and I think there's a lot of excellent ones. I share Mr. Helmut's concern about the first one, which is the allowing two-family homes in R0 and R1 as of right, as a, as a near-term goal, and I think incremental change is good. We, I talked to Ms. Wright about this earlier and shared some of my concerns, and where the ARB is gonna be talking about this on Monday, and I know they voted to adopt this plan, but they, they, they also haven't taken a position on the, the Warren article to remove or to allow two-family housings as of right in, in R0 and R1, and I'm having some difficulty just getting my arms around that in light of the report the ARB issued as part of the special town meeting in November 2020, also following what's going on in Cambridge, where the Planning Board has basically said the end of single-family zoning will take long study to avoid a worse wealth gap, and it's a concern that Cambridge is dealing with, the City Council is directing this. So I'm at a position where I, there's a lot of here that I agree with, there's a lot here that, that things are aspirational, I think it's, it's good to support, but for me, I'd, I'd like to hear from the ARB in terms of what they do on, on Monday night on this, because I, I just feel like, given where they were, and, and given this as a, as a wholesale change, and the fact that this is a five-year program, I'd like to see what they have to say to help me consider my vote here. And I know this is only one strategy out of 42, but it's the first strategy, and it's a near-term strategy, and I, I, I don't wanna be in a position where I voted to adopt this, where, and then there's a subsequent vote on Monday night or get more information, and given where we are timeframe-wise, I don't feel like a little extra time is gonna make a difference in terms of when this gets approved and what the, what the impact is on, on, on the plan being submitted and approved, so I, I, that's where, that's where I am on this right now. Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what, what timeline is with the necessity of approving this. I'm happy to either withdraw or amend the motion if the board would feel more comfortable tabling this to another meeting. The way I, I think, and I sort of touched on this, and I certainly have concerns as well, I didn't wanna turn this into a hearing on single-family zoning, as opposed, and, I mean, I think we're all have a chance to speak on that shortly. I mean, again, this is a set of guidelines, a set of goals, and I had viewed it as, you know, it's in there, and I think a lot of people have reservations, and we'll see what happens with Town, ultimately, you know, we'll see how the ARB votes, but then ultimately we'll see how Town Meeting votes, and it will either be a goal that we had that didn't come to fruition or not. I don't think if we, Town Meeting votes it down again, I'm not sure we'll see it in the next five years, maybe we will, but again, if the board would prefer to table this vote to a subsequent meeting, then I'm happy to amend my motion.
I would second that amendment.
Well, you don't wanna...
Once it tabled, the, the vote to adopt it.
Okay, and put it on another agenda and then go through all, all this again?
Well, I, no, not the public hearing process. Well, I, I think we, Monday night, we're gonna hear from the ARB on it.
That's what you wanted, okay.
I, I, I think the fact that the timeframe is near-term for this and, and where there is gonna be a vote by the, by the board that makes the recommendation to Town Meeting in less than a week, it's, I tend to, well, I spoke before Mr. Hurd made his motion, that I, I certainly would support that, and, and again, if this was a longer-term goal that was in here, I think I could probably get my arms around it to, to, to support it, but I think there needs to, I think we need to hear from the ARB. So, any further comments, Mr. Diggins?
So, my understanding is that ARB approved the plan, correct? They adopted the plan?
The ARB adopted the plan, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
The ARB adopted the plan at a meeting in January, yes.
And this was, and this was supposed to come before us on February 7th, right?
Correct.
So, so why is it that it didn't come to us at that point in time? Were we just busy? I mean, I was here, I'm trying to...
There were a number of requests, Mr. Diggins, and, and we had agendas, and then there was issues with the consultant not being available, so there was delays due to our agenda, and then delays due to the availability of the consultant.
The consultant was supposed to be here at this meeting?
At other meetings that we pushed this off.
I see, I got you. And, 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 so let's say ARB votes down the two-family, the rezoning or allowing two families and one family. What then happens?
I'm sorry?
What happens if ARB, I mean, doesn't go along?
That's another piece of information for us, and we, this was presented to us, and I asked this question when I was in the meetings, and I was told, well, you don't necessarily, this is an aspirational document, so you don't necessarily have to agree with everything, okay? It's important for me to know what, what our ARB thinks on this in the short term, whether this is a near-term goal, so it's a piece of information that I'll use, and that may help my decision whether I, I move to make an amendment to this, maybe, or, or adopt it. It's five days away, I'd like to hear what they have to say. Mr. Hurd?
Just a procedural, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Diggins, did you wanna say anything for, I'm sorry, it's responding to...
No, I'm fine. I'm done, I'm done, thanks.
Just a procedural question, so if we make an amendment, since the ARB has already voted to approve and adopt this plan, if we make an amendment and we approve an amended version, does it have to go back to them?
Has to go back. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The same plan has to be approved by the ARB and the select board. Otherwise, there'll be discrepancy in them, and you have to certify to the DHCD that this is essentially the same plan.
And what are our time constraints?
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, the planning director or the town manager may be aware of time constraints that I'm not aware of, but the idea is that you submit a plan, and while the plan is, if you don't have a plan in place, you don't have the safe harbor status that it can afford for a period of time. So I, I think that's probably the main concern. If I'm mistaken, the manager or the director can, can correct me.
You correct, as I understand of it, Mr. Kuzel.
Yeah, so I get that, and I think we have somewhat of a foresight as to what potential 40B projects we have, and there's no unfriendly 40Bs down the pike that we would need that for. So I mean, again, I'm fine pushing it off to whatever, I want everyone on... So, I mean, again, I'm fine pushing it off to whatever, I want everyone on this board to be comfortable making a decision, and I certainly think it would be in the best interest of the plan to have a unanimous vote if we get to that. And if that's what we need to do to get it right, then I'm happy to do that. Again, I just, I don't know that the way that the ARB will vote will determine my view on single-family zoning, whether they go it or not, we have our own views, and we'll all express them if we choose to at town meeting, but I'm happy to vote to push it off. It doesn't seem like it's time-critical to approve it today.
Any further comments? Okay, so we have a motion to table by Mr. Hurd that was seconded by Mr. Helmoth. Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Your name is Vogt.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item five, review and discussion, Mass DHCD draft guidelines for MBTA communities, Jennifer Ray, Director, Department of Planning and Community Development, and Kelly Lineema, Assistant Director, Department of Planning and Community Development. Ms. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kelly is going to present, but I'm going to give a little introduction first. So, thank you again for having us here tonight. I'm Jennifer Ray, I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development for Arlington. So, we are going to talk about MBTA communities, the zoning requirements, the eligibility, and what we understand based upon draft guidelines that we currently have from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Please, go ahead. So, I'm gonna, just one more slide, sorry, Kelly. We didn't practice. So, the critical thing to understand is that we are presenting tonight because we have draft guidelines in place, and we also have some eligible, eligibility requirements that we have to meet, which includes this presentation to the board. So, what Kelly is going to do is walk us through what it means to be, to remain eligible for certain types of funding, what we understand about those guidelines, and she's also going to share with us the different scenarios that we have explored if those draft guidelines were in place, and those were the requirements that we had to comply with. We intend to have a very public community planning process once we actually know what the requirements are, and to potentially engage some assistance with that process through designers and other planners to assist the department and the redevelopment board in putting together a thoughtful proposal that would ultimately have to be adopted by town meeting in the future. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly, who will walk us through the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, and thank you, members of the board. Kelly Lineema, Assistant Director of the Department of Planning and Community Development. As you can see here, this is the language from the 2021 housing choice legislation. It is somewhat broad, basically just saying there needs to be one district of reasonable size within a half-mile of a subway station or bus station, that is how it applies to Arlington, where multifamily housing is permitted as of right. And by family, they mean no age restrictions, and it's got to be suitable for families with children. Additionally, the legislation requires that this district, this multifamily zoning district be, have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, and that means it's inclusive of streets, sidewalks, open space, et cetera. DHCD was given the mandate to come back with draft guidelines, guidance on how these, how this broader legislation could be interpreted. And so, what they've done is established that a reasonable size to DHCD is a district that is at least 50 acres in total, where at least, where multifamily development, which counts as three or more residential units per development, is allowed by right without age restrictions or bedroom limits. In Arlington, the number, they've also established a capacity threshold, and what that means is not on top, that's not a capacity for housing on top of what we already have, it's a capacity for housing as if there was nothing on the land right now. And this is determined based on, for Arlington, because we are a rapid transit community, this is based on 25% of our total housing units. So, in Arlington, this is, our district needs to allow for a capacity by right of multifamily housing for 5,115 units. And at least half of the land area of the district is within one-half mile of the station. So, what this also means is that so long as one-half of 50 acres, one-half, so 25 acres, as long as that is within the half-mile radius of a station, the rest of the district can extend beyond that station. We'll get into that a little bit more in the scenarios. And by complying, that allows us to remain eligible for certain funding sources. By those funding sources, we're talking about MassWorks grants, which are a substantial funding source for communities all across the state. This is for design and construction of funding for public infrastructure. We're also talking about a smaller pot of funding, but still important, from Housing Choice Initiative, which allows for capital grants, updating master plan, planning studies, zoning amendments, that sort of thing. And Arlington doesn't qualify for a local capital projects fund primarily, this is really for communities that have gaming or casinos, and so we're not eligible for this fund. In the last five years, Arlington has not applied for or received MassWorks or Housing Choice Initiative funding, but I should note that we just completed a contract with, we just finished a contract with StanTech for the Mass Ave and Appleton project, and as part of their scope for this project, they're helping us to apply for a MassWorks grant in June. So, it's really important that we maintain compliance with MBTA communities legislation so that we remain eligible for this funding source. MassWorks, as I mentioned, is a large source with 1.1 million per, on average, for the 51 communities that they gave funds to last year. We are not currently eligible for Housing Choice Initiative grants, but we could be in the next one to two years, I'm happy to answer questions about that. But I think most importantly is that the state could funnel more funding through these programs that are tied to incentive-based standards in the future. So, we don't know what other sorts of funding sources are going to be tied to compliance with housing choice or with the MBTA communities. When we look at whether Arlington complies now, we really don't. So, we, we don't have restrictions on family housing, but we also don't allow much by right, nothing more than two units on a parcel, which is allowed in the R2 zone. Although, everything else has to be approved through a discretionary permit process. We also don't have a district of a reasonable size within a certain distance of an MBTA station or that capacity for 5,115 units, although when you do look at the density in Arlington, in East Arlington, we're not that far from that, so you can get kind of a picture of what a density of 15 units per acre looks like for context. The timeline, if you have comments on the guidelines, which I know were submitted as part of your package, those guidelines are, those comments are due to DHCD tomorrow, so I'm glad we're able to get to this presentation today. The next steps for us, as Jenny mentioned, we're giving this presentation to you, which allows us to submit a letter to DHCD stating that we are maintaining our compliance, and in December, then we need to notify them that we are not compliant. But what this does is it has us start to work on an action plan for maintaining compliance, and that action plan would be due about a year from now. And then in December of 2023, DHCD is requiring that we are implementing the action plan, but this means that town meeting would need to adopt zoning-by-law amendments. And so, again, as Jenny mentioned, there would be a public process as part of this, as part of developing the recommendations and the zoning amendments for town meeting. To submit your comments, you can do so at mass.gov/MBTAcommunities. We are respectfully asking that you CC staff on any of these comments or provide us a copy of them. As we're going to be working on this going forward, it's really helpful to know what people are saying, so that we can, we can work with the community and in development of plans that are community-endorsed. The final guidelines will be issued in the end of summer or early fall of 2022, and so until that point, we're sort of holding off, we're sort of done some test pieces to understand size and scope, which I'll show you in a second, but we're holding off on those, until we receive those final guidelines to really understand what we need to comply with. Some initial ideas for compliance, we could reduce the development subject to a special permit, so we could allow for three or more residential units in select areas, looking at specific districts. We could look at structures along or immediately behind Mass Avenue, or thinking about allowing a little bit more by right in districts that are already higher-density districts. We also, this is a recommendation of the housing plan and a recommendation of the NetZero Action Plan, is to create a large 40-yard district, and we can get into more details on that if you have questions, and allow two accessory dwelling units by right in single-family zones. We did want to look at, we wanted to provide the board with sort of a conceptual sense of what 50 acres looks like on the ground, and so, again, this is very conceptual, these are not plans, this is just kind of trying to give you a sense of what is 50 acres and how much, how much acreage would we actually want to look at when we're thinking about that calculus of acreage versus density and number of units. So, we looked at these three areas here, East Arlington, which is the one that everybody thinks about when they think about MBTA communities, because we are a rapid transit station, but also looking at Arlington Heights, because the bus station with some minor amendments to the guidelines could actually be qualified as a station location. And we also included Arlington Center in this, just so that we could get a sense of, it's not, it's not compliant with the guidelines, but if we did want to extend a district in order to get more acreage, to sort of think about what could that look like around the center. So, just for a sense of how big is 50 acres, so in East Arlington here, this is about a 65 to 70-acre district, where more than half of it is within that half-mile radius. In Arlington Heights, this is looking at a really narrow strip of land that's within a half-mile radius, almost entirely within a half-mile radius of the bus station, and then extends from the Lexington border, almost halfway toward Arlington Center, between Arlington Center and Arlington Heights. One thing to note with those two prior examples is that those are pretty low-sized districts, and they may not, the town may want to consider doing something a little bit larger, because we do need to have that capacity for 5,115 units. So, that capacity in that area may not be suitable based on what residents are looking for. And so, we also just looked at, what if we did something around each of our three business districts? One of the things that the guidelines do allow for is for multifamily, oh, sorry, for mixed-use development, so we can include site plan review and encourage mixed-use development with commercial on the ground floor. So, we may want to think about how this contributes to our economic development, potential income. We also can put affordability requirements as part of the zoning, and so that's definitely something we would want to talk about with the community. And then our final example here, which is, you're seeing here, is a district that could be between 200 and 450 acres, which does bring us down to, if you, if you had 15 acres per unit, that, that district size would get, if we had 15 acres per unit by right, this would, this would basically be the size of that, the middle strip here, but you could consider doing an overlay, which would be a set distance from the Mass Ave border. I'm going to hand this back over to Jenny, but again, we're here to answer any questions you might have, and we'll keep you informed as we move forward with this process.
Go ahead, Ms. Ray.
Yep, thank you. Just one, one quick note on Kelly's, the scenarios that we shared that were for illustrative purposes only and for the purposes of this discussion. We picked up the Bus Depot, as you may have seen, that is also not known, whether or not that is actually an eligible location. It may or may not be, and the guidelines are a little unclear about that, so I just want to make it clear that we're, these are all exploratory and for discussion only. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for purposes of the presentation, I know we have to receive the presentation, you mentioned the deadline for submitting comments, and the fact that the final guidelines will be issued later, end of summer or September time period, is that? Okay, yes, you know, so for tonight's purposes, we can have a discussion, but you're looking for us just to receive this report and offer any comments, is that?
We are just, yeah, looking to have a discussion with you, we, you can just accept the report and the conversation, but there is nothing for you to act upon tonight. As Kelly was suggesting, the deadline for comments to the Department of Housing and Community Development for anybody who wishes to comment is by tomorrow, March 31st, and that, of course, could include the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn to the board. Mr. Hurd?
A move, receipt.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Any further comments? Mr. Helmoth? Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Mahan.
Just really not to get into a discussion about it tonight, because as the chair and Ms. Ray has pointed out, we're in the infancy of this process, and we really don't know what it is. I just do want to raise my concerns, when I first looked at this, especially for East Arlington and the current Mugar process that we're going through, this, the way you look at it could sort of fly in the face of that or fly against the prevailing idea for that area down there. But, having said that, until we know exactly what the guidelines are, what does, what is eligible and can be approved, and then if, especially, I mean, basically, there's really just two places I can think of in Arlington, as you pointed out, the bus station and our wife. And our wife is certainly taking the Oak Tree development out of it, really better assault with the Cambridge side development of it. But, I'm getting ahead of the actual conversation, because I don't know what the parameters or the matrix of actually what the guidelines are, what it is the town or municipality needs to fulfill and agree to, but also on the converse, what that opens that area of that town to in order to accept the funds. So, I'm happy to, you know, initiate the process. I do have some concerns going in, but I don't think they're valid right now, because none of us knows exactly what the actual legal framework is. I just wanted to put that out there, which I know you're already, we already have an eye towards looking at that anyways, it's not like I'm the only person who's come up with that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Helmoth?
Just quickly, I wanted to express my appreciation for the quality of this presentation. Even though, as my colleague Ms. Mahan said, you know, we don't know what the guidelines look like, it's really helpful to start, it helped me understand what this could look like, what kinds of decisions that we in town meeting may have to make, and what some opportunities there are. There's a lot of information crammed into a very short presentation, but the videos were great, and just credit where that's due. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, I was part of the meeting with the MBTA Advisory Board, and we talked about this yesterday, you know, and the state is really committed to helping communities work with this ACA, and this is all part of the Housing Communities Act, you know, 2021, and so they are going to really help communities develop an action plan. At least that's the current plan with the current administration, we, into all of this, we toss in a gubernatorial election, but hopefully, I mean, the next administration will stick with this plan, because, I mean, the whole point of it is to create more housing. I mean, the state is committed to that, it realizes the importance of it, and it realizes also that different communities are going to have different needs, but the goal is to help the communities as much as possible work through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Yeah, and I also want to thank you both for the presentation and for the materials, just where we are relative to the draft guidelines and where we're going forward. So, appreciate the presentation and for you sticking around with us tonight. I know Monday night you had a late night too, probably with the ARB meeting, so thank you, thank you both very much. So, a motion for receipt by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Your name is Vogt?
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Sure. Okay, so, the good news for the board, we're moving on to Warren article hearings. However, the good news is that what we did the other night, because of timing on the agenda, we put all of the articles that were scheduled to be heard on Monday, because we didn't know what we were going to get through, we have completed just about all of them. So, as I go through this, I think we can move through these pretty rapidly. The first two, the first one, Article 21, this was related to Mr. Diggins, what was presented the other night on Article 7, and if town meeting votes approval of the study commission, this one will not be necessary. So, we were advised by Attorney Heim to vote a "we'll report" on Article 21, because we will wait to see what town meeting does. I think that's what we talked about. Attorney Heim, is that?
I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood, Mr. Chair. I actually think that you could vote no action.
Okay.
You've got a recommendation of action on the other article. That article also contains the language of "take any action related thereto." If, for some reason, town meeting wanted to extend the life of the committee, I think it probably could under that article if it was really desperately necessary, or, you know, we could try to revisit the Article 24. revisit the Article 24. So, I think with the explanation in the comment that the only reason you're not recommending action is because you've received a recommendation, is that fair to say, Mr. Diggins? I know that you've done tremendous amount of work with this.
Yeah, I mean, it's fair to say. I mean, that was my understanding too, but I wasn't going to try to play town council. So, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, Mr. Hurd?
Vote no action on Article 21.
Okay, okay. And we had extensive public comment the other night on Article 7, so I'm not going to, I don't think there's anybody on the list for this anyway. So, on a motion of no action by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Heluth, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay, great, thank you. Article 24, now, this is one that we, in talking to the town manager, we also have had some discussions with the Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee wanted to have some, share their thoughts on this with us, and I, we couldn't arrange times to do that because of the way the schedules worked on their meetings and our meetings. And so, what we agreed to do is we will hold off on this until we get that feedback out of fairness to them. And so, what I suggest, if the board is willing, is that we would put a will report in our select board report and see if we can get this done between now and Town Meeting. So, okay, motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any questions, comments? Okay, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay. See how quickly we're moving through this Article 23. This is a vote on the Board of Youth Services. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to report on this article that I think the right posture is to take a recommended vote of no action, not because the Board of Youth Services is not interested in updating portions of its essentially charter, if you will, but because researching the creation of the Board of Youth Services and its operative guidelines has been a little bit trickier than a lot of folks anticipated. It was originally created in 1962, I think, and then it was a little bit hard to track down some later votes that amended it. So, I think this is the type of thing where if the board is okay with it, the request is for no action at this time, and that they'll come back to the next annual or special Town Meeting, whichever occurs sooner, to revisit this.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Heim. Mr. Hurd?
Vote no action on, I move no action on Article 23.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Heluth. Any comments, questions from board members? Seeing none? Nobody is on the list. So, on a motion of no action by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Heluth, Attorney Heim. Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
No. I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes?
Mrs. Mahan?
Thanks for waking me up, Mr. Diggins. Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay, and the last one, we have done all the others. The last one this evening is Article 47. I believe that's the endorsement of parking benefit district expenditures. Is that ready tonight, Mr. Chapdeline?
It is, and if the board, if it pleases the board, I can quickly share my screen, give a brief overview, and then answer any questions the board might have.
Sure.
Okay, can you all see that spreadsheet?
A little larger, please.
A little tough.
Is it tough? Okay.
I just had my exam this week, but I didn't.
It's clear to me, so I'm glad I.
It's black and white, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's better.
All right, let me just move my screen around here. So, let me focus in on, can you see my cursor here?
Yeah.
I want to focus in on what we're asking the board. This is the total parking package that we bring to the Finance Committee, and then will be contained within, I think, both the boards and the Finance Committee's reports. But after meeting several times with the Parking Advisory Committee, we came together with a list of proposals for the FY '23 parking benefit district expenditures that we'd like approval for. The past couple of years with the pandemic, revenue's been down, and because of revenue being down, we have not expended very much from, you know, toward the parking benefit district. In fact, we only project to spend in this current fiscal year $20,000 towards the seasonal planters in the center. However, because we haven't spent money and we had collected significant amount of revenue before the pandemic, we do have a balance of $427,000 in the parking fund, which allows us in FY '23 to make this request of $200,000 for the parking benefit district. So, the first item you see is the Chestnut Street Safety Improvements in the amount of $50,000. This is directly related to the approval of the board back at its meeting in February 23rd to expand the parking benefit district to Chestnut Street so that the improvements that were recommended by TAC and that are now being further designed by STAN-TAC, that these monies can go towards that actual implementation. The next item is for the Russell Common Lot in the amount of $65,000. That lot has long been of interest of those serving on the Parking Advisory Committee and also members of the Chamber of Commerce for some landscape beautification and lighting improvements, and we'd like to put this $65,000 amount towards that. We'd like to continue the seasonal planting amount in the amount of $20,000, and actually, that first planting this season will go in next week. Next, we'd like to replace the sidewalk on Old Mystic Street. You all probably know what this is, but in case you don't, that's that pedestrian walkway in between Whittamore Park and the commercial buildings that Wooden Strings is in facing on Mass Ave. It hadn't been included as part of the Arlington Center sidewalk replacement, so it is still aging brick, and we'd like to make it consistent with the rest of the center sidewalk and fund it out of this parking benefit district account. And then finally, the railroad lot Blue Bike Station, we have moved it from the sidewalk where it was placed, but we want to make sure and put an investment in keeping it in the parking lot where it's currently located, but doing so in a fashion that will keep it off the ground and let snow operations and snow clearing happen while it is in place so that it can be operable year-round. So, we don't exactly know what it will cost, but we'd like to put at least $25,000 towards that to improve that site and make it operable year-round for Blue Bike users. So, that adds up to a total of $200,000 for the parking benefit district. Would very much like your favorable action on it, but be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. Questions, Mr. Hurd?
I'll move positive action. And as a member of the Parking Advisory Committee, I keep forgetting the name of the committee I serve on. We went through a number of options as to how to spend the money this year, and really, the theme, I think, as you could tell, is kind of helping rejuvenate the Arlington Center District. And we've done a few walkthroughs of the Russell Commons Lot, and I think when you drive by, it doesn't seem so bad. When you walk through, there's a lot to point out and a lot to work on. And those were kind of the key points that we're trying to accomplish with the requests this year is to try to, you know, we're getting through the tail end of the utility work in Arlington Center, and we can start the revitalization of Broadway Plaza and to put some of this money into the surrounding areas so we have a complete product to start to fill some of the businesses that we lost in the past couple of years and rejuvenate that one particular district. And I think with these requests, we're going a long way towards achieving that goal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Second?
Second that, and you know, and I'm glad Mr. Hurd explained that because we hear a lot from residents who understandably are frustrated with the vacant storefronts. And, you know, there are a lot of, it's a complex issue, but I think it's important just for the public to understand that the town really has that on our radar and that this is a really good example of one thing that we're doing that will help.
Thank you, Mr. Heluth. Any further comments? Mr. Diggins?
I just replaced the old brick sidewalk. It's dangerous.
That's right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody on the list?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Okay, so, on a motion for favorable action by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Heluth, Attorney Heim. Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay, so, that concludes our Warren Article hearings. Final votes and comments, it looks like a long list, but again, I believe the only ones on tonight are going to be Article 8 and Article 19. We've already voted on Article 6, Article 9, Article 17, Article 20, Article 22, Article 26, Article 73. I just want to check with Attorney Heim, I think we voted Article 25 as well.
I believe so.
Okay, I, yeah, that was one open one. There are a few here that we don't have back tonight.
Yes.
Okay, good, because they were just heard on Monday, or they're not quite ready because the tape from our last meeting is still not available.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so, let's move to our, and these were two that were held from the last meeting, Articles 8 and 19. So, we'll go to Article 8, and I think there were a couple of proposed changes. So, I don't know, I think those have been circulated to board members. So, if anybody wants to make a motion on that or to have any comments.
Mr., would you like me to speak to mine?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, my suggestion is really just a clarification. Under the Section 3, Subsection A, under the appointment of the commission, I'm suggesting that Item 5, one member nominated by the Envision Arlington Diversity Task Group, co-chairs, and then we add the words with the approval of the Envision Arlington Standing Committee. The reason for that being that the Diversity Task Group does not have a formal membership, anybody can show up, they're not appointed, there's no appointment process. So, I think that if the Standing Committee has the ultimate vote, that's helpful to them as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heluth. And Mr. Diggins, I believe you had additional, an insert on the comments for this, if you want to speak to that?
Sure, it was just to reflect, I mean, what happened in the meeting. We did amend, you know, the recommendation of the Study Committee, I mean, to allow for law enforcement, retired law enforcement that are not from Arlington to be eligible. And so, I think that it should just, the record, the comments should just reflect what happened. So, I hope that was just neutral. I mean, it just kind of stated what happened, that there was a vote, and the record of the vote, and left it at that. No, I didn't editorialize it all, so I hope that's acceptable.
Okay, thank you. So, on both of those, if we, if anybody wants to make a motion on that for final vote?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay.
Mr. DeCoursey, I'm sorry, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Attorney. I think you're going to add one more.
Mrs. Mar, actually, if you caught it, and we gave her credit, I think it's Article 12.
That's right. I mean, yeah, thank you, Ms. Mar, for that. Yeah, Article 12, the Bylaw Amendment for Single-Use Plastic Water Bottle Regulation, that one, we have not voted. Attorney Heim did circulate that, so, to the board for any motion or comments?
Move approval on that?
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments? Seeing none on a motion for approval by Mr. Heluth, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay, and the last one this evening, this was a hold on Article 19. I believe Mr. Diggins had asked for a hold on it. I don't know if there's any proposed changes.
Well, yes, I mean, so, this is one where I was, I'm seriously contemplating changing my vote to no action. In the discussion, I didn't want it to be a back and forth. It was late, of course, you know, or at least it was looking like it was going to be a late evening. And I do understand that there has been, I think, a good precedence of having these things done by, at least by the committee, and I think the one stated is the, not Cemetery Committee, but the.
Public Memorials.
Thank you, Public Memorials Committee, thank you. And so, I mean, I'm inclined to let that happen because I could easily imagine a situation where, I mean, if we were brought a number of these, we would want something like the Public Memorials Committee, you know, to exist, I mean, so that there could be some standard way of dealing with this. You know, I mean, the way things happened, I understood the argument then at the time, and I just wanted to give maybe a little more information than is necessary, but the sequence of the vote just made it hard for me not to at least vote positive action on it. I mean, Mr. Hurd had made the motion, and I'd seconded it, and so, when the vote came, the sequence of the vote, I mean, kind of by coincidence was that Mr. Hurd went first, and I went second, and I was just couldn't really vote against it, having seconded it, although I understood the argument for no action. I would hope, though, that in the process of the Memorial Committee hearing this, that they would entertain Mr. Schlickman's request, meaning that he could take it to them and make his case for it, you know. So, with that hope, and perhaps Mr. Heim can tell me if that is part of the process, maybe, you know, I'd be happy to change my vote to no action.
I was just going to turn to Attorney Heim because this is one of those rare instances where it was a three-to-two vote. So, if Mr. Diggins were to change his vote, it would change the outcome of the recommendation. But if you could talk to us about the procedure for that?
There's no formal requirement for you guys to have a hearing on this kind of thing. If you want to change your votes, you can change your votes and the quantum of your vote. That's up to the board, whether, A, you want to entertain a change to a previously registered vote of the board at this point in time on something that is not legally required. It's not like, I know we call them hearings, but they're not ARB hearings, which are required under Chapter 40A. So, if the board wants to change its vote, it's really up to you to decide how much process you want to afford that, whether you want to consider reopening the hearing or whether you want to just flip the vote now based on what your discussion has been. It's entirely up to the board's discretion in terms of how it wants to handle this specific situation. It's not, usually, you would have like a sort of motion for reconsideration first, if you wanted to add a little bit of formality to it, would be, you know, will the board allow reconsideration of the article? And then, secondly, will the board vote again? It also might give an opportunity to Mr. Hurd and Mr. Heluth if they want to stick to their guns, if they want to change their position, you know. So, I would, I guess my recommendation would be, first, take a vote to whether or not you'll reconsider the previous action, and then, secondly, take a fresh vote. And I understand that we haven't posted it as a Warren Article hearing, but it is a vote and comment. So, that's my perspective.
All right, thank you. I think that's appropriate too. Mr. Diggins?
I'm sorry, Mr. DeCoursey, I know that Mrs. Mahan may have been the only person here who's experienced this before. I don't know if there's been a precedent in the vice chair's experience. I have not seen a change of vote that would actually change the outcome, which is a new situation, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think, I had it when I first joined the board, but because I wasn't at the hearing, there was just a comment that had I voted, the board's outcome would have been different. But we said, you know, we put a stop at the election. But that's the only thing. I don't, Mrs. Mahan, do you have anything?
It's never happened before.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that and respect that if the board has had a pass practice on this, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Diggins, would you like to bring a motion for reconsideration?
Sure, sure, but just a quick question about the Public Memorial Committee. So, would Mr. Schlickman be able to make his case to them? Do you know, Mr. Heim?
Yes, Mr. Schlickman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, Mr. Schlickman doesn't need to go to Town Meeting to achieve this goal. I think we all agree on that. It was just a little bit ambiguous as to whether or not Town Meeting could, you know, take a vote on this. So, he would be able to take it to the Public Memorials Committee, which would make a recommendation to this board, and this board would vote on whether or not they agree with the Public Memorials Committee and either name it after him or not, after the Magliozzi's or not. If that answers your question, Mr. Diggins.
Many thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Heim.
I should have just said yes or no, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Chapdeline, I think wanted to provide an answer as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just not to put too fine a point on it, but I think practice has been for this board to make referrals to the Public Memorials Committee and not for them to necessarily directly receive requests from residents. So, that, I don't mean to split hairs too much, but I think this board could certainly forward their request to the Public Memorials consideration.
Fair point. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, you made the motion, Mr. Diggins, is that, or maybe you haven't made it. I asked if you want to make it.
I would make a motion. So, I'd like to make a motion for to reconsider, you know, my vote on Article 19.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Comment before Mr. Hurd?
I don't want to make a comment that would be longer than a vote. I just, I didn't know we had a motion for reconsideration. I thought we would just revote it in final votes and comments. I thought we would just revote it in final votes and comments with a new vote, but whatever we got to do.
Okay.
We all know what the goal is and what the end game is.
Well, we'll have the vote on reconsideration. If that's a favorable vote, then we will vote, revote the article. Okay. So on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mrs. Mahan for reconsideration. Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
unanimous vote. The matter is before you for reconsideration.
Okay. And Mr. Diggins, if you'd like to bring a motion on the article now?
Right. So the motion would be no action on the article?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion for no action on Article 19.
Okay, do a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Helmuth?
Yep. For me, this is not a clear-cut thing, so, you know, I'm fine with how this goes. I think I'm going to stay with my original vote, just because my belief is that the, this is a novel situation, and that the best, a better avenue would be the town meeting route rather than Public Memorials Committee, but, you know, not a hill I'm going to die on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Helmuth.
I guess I would just say that it's such a unique situation that Mr. Schlickman found an unnamed stretch of roadway, so I don't anticipate, you know, people coming out of the woodwork to rename the multitude of unnamed roadways that we have in town, so I'll stick with my original vote, too, as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. So on a motion for no action by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
No.
Mr. Diggins?
I have to think about that one.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
No.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
All right. The vote is three to two carries for no action. I will draft a comment that is consistent with much of this, but refers it to, that recommends referral to the Public Memorials Committee. Is that okay?
Thank you, Attorney Heim, yes.
History is made.
Okay. All right. So that concludes the final votes for tonight. There will be a few that we will address at the next meeting. Next item, Item 7, correspondence received, request for memorial for Julia Miller. Before I ask for a board vote, I think, Mr. Chapdeline, I believe we discussed this, I think your recommendation would be a referral to the Parks and Recreation Commission, is that?
That is correct, and they are expecting it.
Okay. All right. So if I have a motion?
Lovely idea, and move receipt and referral to the Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Hurd. Okay. So on a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Okay. New business, Ms. Maher? Attorney Heim?
We have a single special town meeting, Warren Article, for your consideration. It's an eminent domain taking for Safe Route Schools, which means that it shouldn't clog up your calendar too much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And while he isn't here, I'm going to turn to Mr. Chapdeline across the room for any new business.
No new business tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Helmuth?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
Just one thing, and I discussed this with Attorney Heim and the chair really briefly, but there's a meeting tomorrow that, it's my understanding, the town manager and Attorney Heim will be attending with the MWRA. It's a meeting that, which I'm really excited about this news, that Save the Al Life now has not only the Mystic River Watershed joining in that effort, but the Charles River Watershed regarding the CSO discharge in the Al Life. So there's already been a pre-planning meeting before that, which was very positive, but they'll be meeting tomorrow. And what I wanted to bring to my colleagues' attention, which we're all aware of, that April 1st is the deadline for the CSO permates, who currently are permitted to discharge CSOs into the Al Life, being MWRA, the cities of Cambridge and Somerville, they have to submit to DEP and EPA.
Yeah, please, Chuck, yes.
Right. Their plan for how they're going to address that, if they're going to continue doing that, if there's an alternative plan, an A and a B. The good thing is the Save the Al Life Mystic River Watershed and Charles River Watershed did already submit a letter, their own testimony to the April 1st deadline to the DEP and the EPA, saying that this practice has to stop and stands unified in that. And so I know either at the next select board meeting, or perhaps, I don't know if and when, we may have an executive session on this, will be, you know, brought up to speed. Again, we're in the beginning of this, as well as the chair and I have asked the town manager and town council after April 1st, and DEP and EPA gather their required remarks from Cambridge, Somerville, MWRA. They'll come out with their own sort of draft report. Can you, am I saying anything incorrectly?
No, no.
Okay. And once that happens, that the town manager, Attorney Heim, will get that back to all of us, and will embark on this, and this is separate from the NIPD's permit process, which is also coming up. So I just think that's good news. I was so excited that, you know, it's definitely spreading. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so just a quick, a couple of things. And Civic Engagement Group is having a forum on the annual town surveys. By that, I mean the past survey, review of that one, the one from 2021, a discussion about the current survey, and early discussion about the 2023 survey, and also the current survey, the deadline has been extended to May 1st. And finally, I'm wearing my heart tie, and I don't do that just anytime, it's because it's your last meeting. It's your last meeting. It's your last meeting, Mr. Chair. And so it's been great, you know, and appreciate the great job you've done. You really did a wonderful job keeping at least me informed of what's going on, and I appreciate your patience and your leadership over the last year. And it was great that you're going to be back, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Here, here.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, after a long string of 11 o'clock end time meetings, I always look forward to the meetings that follow the end of, the conclusion of Warren Article hearings, so. And then, thank you for your leadership this year, and I just wanted to let you know, though I haven't made a decision, I am strongly considering voting for you on Saturday.
I appreciate the consideration. Thank you very much. And I want to thank everybody. This is my last meeting as chair. I want to thank Ms. Maher, Ms. Costa, and Mrs. Kripelka for all the support that they've given me the past year and the direction on different things. I want to thank Attorney Heim. We've worked very closely on a number of items throughout the year. I want to thank Mr. Chapdeline as well. We hit a lot of contact throughout the past year with meetings. I want to thank my colleagues for all your support. Made my job a lot easier, first time I had done it, and I really appreciate everybody's support and the collegiality. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Helmuth? Attorney Heim?
I don't want to get too excited about that.
That's right.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.